We are live. I will check to see our attendees populating the room.
Shall I open the planning board meeting?
Sure.
Okay, so this is Chair Bonnie Sontag for the Planning Board, opening our meeting for July 7th, 2021. As we are still remote, I will do it with a roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth DeLeo.
Here.
Liam McGovern. Not yet. Rick Tainter.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag. Yeah, here, sorry. Anne Gardner and MJ Verde are not or absent. We also have Linda Guthrie, our note taker here. I am going to turn it over to Counselor Shan to open her part of the meeting when we come back to our full Planning Board meeting after the first joint public hearing item on the agenda. I will go through the rest of our agenda and we will proceed from there. So Counselor Shan, over to you.
Okay, so this is Counselor Shan for Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, calling our committee to order and see if we'll take roll call. So is Counselor Igerman.
Here.
Counselor Wallace.
Here.
All right, so I always say that we are open and I will turn this over to Director Port to do a quick introduction on the zoning update. And I want to give folks just since there's so much going on in the Planning Board tonight, we're going to try and just go through the eight topics of discussion. So we appreciate that this is probably going to go on to another meeting sometime in August, but I just want to make sure that we had an opportunity to get through the eight items of substantive issues that have been discussed. So Director Port, if you just want to go through your piece and we can get started.
Sure, thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Chair Sontag. So this is just an update from where you were last time. My intention here is not to go over the same content that I went over previously. I'm happy to recap any of that. I did want to know and I wanted to thank a couple of folks who had given some more detailed comments to us. And I mentioned this only because we have some representation of both the permitting boards and the council, obviously. I want to thank Counselor Argon for sponsoring this amendment and Counselor Shan and Counselor Wallace as well. And the folks who provided feedback. We did receive some other miscellaneous feedback, but I did want to note those. The categories of edits that we have, and I apologize, by the way, I could not get a markup version out to folks until today. And so I wanted to recap that here. The markup version that I sent you today, most of that fits in the first category here. So that's minor language or editorial edits. And so the updated draft indicates in Microsoft Word markup with color indication where the changes are suggested. Jennifer and I have reviewed these changes. This is my proposed language to address most of the comments or concerns we've received. There are a few things that are maybe open for some discussion this evening, and that's the second category, the sort of substantive issues or concerns. I think they're helpful for to have some discussion on those this evening as opposed to, I would argue, the minor editorial edits, because those things can largely be worked out, tweaking, you know, where here or there. But it would help to confirm the so-called policy so that we can finalize language consistent with what the expectation is of the City Council and Planning Board on these particular issues. Most of the effort here was to update language in the ordinance to address, you know, some loopholes and issues and unclear language and so forth. But because some of that language touches upon substantive issues, that's why there's a bullet list, which I'll get to in just a moment. After this, I would assume, and I'll leave it to the chairs and the rest of the board and the council members as to what to, how you'd like to proceed as far as a revised document, any recommendations to the council and/or continuation of the public here. So the non-substantive edits, just briefly, clarifying language, consistency in a language between different sections or phrases, minor grammatical changes and punctuation, and consolidating some cross-references or overlapping provisions. That's basically the non-substantive pieces. This slide, I think, is probably the best focal point for discussion this evening, and I'll defer you on this, but substantive issues that I think are still in here are the yard definitions. And these are, some of these concerns were raised by others, and a lot of others that want to speak to them, speak to them. But the bullet list is yard definitions and setback requirements. So there was a concern there in general that if you can have some things like decks and things like that in a 50%, up to 50% of the setback allowance, is that, you know, adequate, for instance, for unroofed decks, is that adequate for smaller areas or small lots in the city like the South End? That was the characterization of the concern, and so I'll leave it to others to speak to. But there was a question there. I think, and I'll leave it to Jennifer if she wants to speak to this at all. But I think that I wanted to note that part of the effort here in this particular provision was to clarify where there is an allowance for some of these features as opposed to taking away something 50%. It's actually clarifying if there's an allowance as a right for up to 50% of that setback to be used for those purposes. Letter permits, this is something where, just as a synopsis for folks and sort of catch up or remind you, there are certain things that smaller building structures or features that don't necessarily require a billing permit on the billing code, but there is benefit for the city and for the property owners in having a permit document what has been approved and ensuring that it's compliant with setbacks and so forth. So this provision was intended to have some sort of review and approval under zoning to make sure the requirements are met where no billing permit is otherwise required so that there is something that reviews that and confirms it's appropriately done, properly cited. And Jennifer can speak to that if you'd like to later on, but I think the basic point there I would make is that there's been instances in the past where folks have installed things, sheds, for instance, in the wrong places. They may not trigger the need for a billing permit. I'll defer the building commissioner on any questions like that, but, or Jennifer, if she wants to speak to them. But generally speaking, you know, where there isn't a trigger for the billing code, it would behoove all of us, I think, to have some documentation and some verification that where people are placing things complies with the zoning ordinance. Otherwise, it could be a little chaotic as to what's happened when and whether or not it was allowed or not. Setbacks for detached accessory structures, this is again going to sheds and some questions there about the maximum size allowed, how close to the lot lines should they be allowed? And again, is that adequate for smaller lots in the city, say, in the South End? Another point of discussion you may want to have, and this was raised by, I think, the Wardland Council, was whether or not it makes sense for the Planning Board and City Council to continue as the current ordinance suggests having joint public hearings for zoning amendments. I'll defer to you folks on how you want to handle something like that. There is not a requirement under the state statute that the hearings be held jointly. But I think that, and I was not here at the time that language was originally put into the ordinance, but I would imagine that the primary benefit of that, and it's one that I support, is having cross deliberation between Planning Board and City Council members as to the benefits, pros and cons, questions, concerns about the amendments, rather than having those in separate silos or isolated discussions. To me, there's some benefit in having that shared discussion. But again, you may have a preference for how you want to handle that. And again, that's why that word joint public, or that phrase joint public hearings is in the ordinance generally. There is a requirement, I should clarify for anybody who does not know, the statute does require that the Planning Board provide a recommendation, or at least give it the opportunity to provide a recommendation to the council prior to the adoption of ordinances. So that's expected. What's clarified here, local ordinance is that that hearing be held together. The demolition control overlay district or DCON, there's a couple of things with that. One is the inclusion of perhaps preservation of exterior sheathing. We can have some further discussion about that, and we do, you know, a slide or two to speak to that. But there was some concern there about that particular aspect of the language that's proposed. The origination of that language that was proposed and the proposal that originally went into the council, that actually came as a result of KP laws reading and helping us to apply and interpret the existing ordinance. There was some clarification as to which things are considered triggers under the ordinance, which things are captured for the purposes of defining demolition work that someone's doing, and essentially determining whether or not someone's triggered a threshold in which they need to have reviewed on by the zoning board of appeals and advisory opinions from the store commission. And in this case, it was pointed out that one could read the ordinance to not only protect the siding, obviously, that the public can see, the framing, you know, that's part of that exterior wall, and also the sheathing. And I think the question there was, well, if the sheathing isn't seen, and it's more of a sort of a building code type feature, if you will, does it make sense to have that be something that's triggering the demolition or that's subject to review? I'll leave it to folks to debate that issue, but I certainly have no objection to removing the sheathing piece for this. And that is what the markup that I sent out today would do generally, that one element anyway. The demolition control overlay district, again, modifying the calculation of the demolition area, there were some concerns there. Again, this language is originally coming from some cases that we've seen since these ordinances have been adopted. Some of you might recall the Harrison Street application and others, but the, we're trying to clarify in here what exactly counts for demolition purposes and try to provide diagrams as well. And Jennifer's helped to sketch out a diagram that we'll be using to illustrate for folks that are applying for permits. But the idea here being if you are going to remove or relocate a window, should that or should that not trigger or be calculated as part of the demolition of the exterior? And people may have different thoughts on that, but that's one of those policy level questions that if we have clarity from the Planning Board and council on, it's then easy for us to draft the language accordingly for your review and adoption. The new provision, there was a question there, I guess, and I'll leave it to you, is whether or not you want to have another provision that would address so-called character-defining features such as windows, roof lines, et cetera, that are visible from a public way. We defer to you on that. There is, you know, an argument could be made that some of that is sort of like an LHD type, you know, consideration, architectural details and so forth. But there's not a reason why, I would argue, that under zoning, you can't do those things. So you may want to have some discussion about what other parameters you want to have calculated as part of the demolition or be subject to review in the demolition control overlay district. And so I'll leave it to you for that discussion as well. The downtown overlay district, again, our original intention with this package was not to focus on any substance of changes, although some of the language touches upon substantive matters. But our intention here was to clarify language, but in doing so, that of course raised some questions for folks about, you know, what the current language says, proposed language would do. So that's why we have this list here. The downtown overlay district, the Planning Board and the ZBA, in the most recent case, some of you might have been following on Brian and Files, the storefront change, the proposal to change the historic windows to operable windows. Without going over too much of the background there, the current ordinance as written today prohibits the operable windows or replacement of non-operable windows with operable windows. The proposed language here would allow that operable window to be installed. The one note that I wanted to make here, and just so everybody is on the same page about any discussions you're having or deliberations on the matter, is that, well, the ordinance proposal that's before you right now would allow the Planning Board, because they are the special permit granting authority in the downtown overlay district, would allow them to approve an operable window to be installed where there isn't an operable one today. The one note I would make up of that is that the ordinance currently, and as this amendment is proposed, would still require someone to demonstrate that the window itself, whether if it's historic, could not be salv, which essentially that it's been rated poor or infeasible essentially to restore or repair before being able to be eligible for the operable window. So you may, if you want to tinker with language any further, you have any questions or concerns about that, you know, you can discuss that further. But the reason I mention that is because in the case of the Brian Files storefront, the zoning board of appeals had received an application for variance from the operability provision of the ordinance, because the planning board does not have the authority to grant the variance from that. And in this case, they went to the ZBA asking for the ability to have an operable window. And in essence, in that approval, to not need to demonstrate that the window was poor or infeasible via the special permit process. That allowance for the operable window to have that mere feature of an operable window was allowed by the ZBA, but subject to design review by the Planning Board, given that the Planning Board typically handles the features like this in the downtown. And so leaving the remainder of that variance request, the smaller, narrowly confining the variance that's granted to an operable window, left the rest of that review of the design of a window to the Planning Board, but did include in that recognition that the existing historic window could be replaced with that operable window. So that's just, I think, important context if you're considering allowing operable windows and the extent to which one can obtain those permits down the road, depending on which storefront, whether or not the windows are operable today or not, and so forth. The downtown overlay district and the demolition control overlay district, that's number seven there, or sorry, I apologize, it's two numbers sevens, but number eight, whether or not any waivers could be granted by special permit versus a variance. And perhaps that number seven above is a good example of that, where something that is done in certain places in other communities, and there's different places even here in our ordinance, but where the Planning Board or the ZBA, if the case may be, where it would make sense, and it's up to you to decide what would make sense policy-wise, but whether or not it would make any sense to have the Planning Board or the ZBA as special permit granting authorities, SPGAs, have the ability to grant waivers or even reductions, if you will, from any requirements of the ordinance or sections of the ordinance, rather than the default under a state statute, which is that anybody who wants an exception to those rules has to go to the ZBA for a variance, which necessitates discussion of hardship, you know, whether or not there's a hardship involved and so forth. But similar consideration of whether or not something is detrimental or, you know, has problems with it. So I mentioned that mainly because, you know, there is an example in our ordinance here where in the open space overlay district, the Planning Board has had for years the ability and in a few instances is allowed smaller lots to be built in an open space residential development because that helps to promote more open space in those developments. And so the Planning Board has the ability by special permit to reduce those lot size, you know, at its discretion, you know, looking at a particular plan. Whereas anywhere else, you know, that may require a variance from the ZBA because it's not something that's expressly in the ordinance allowed for the Planning Board to do by special permit. So that is the list, I would say, of things that are substantive that are certainly would help me and any of my staff, Jennifer and others, to finalize language that addresses any concerns that have been raised. We're happy to work on anything else that you have tonight or any language, wordsmithing and so forth. With that, I guess I would turn it back to Chair Shan and Chair Sontag.
Um, so can you promote Counselor Devlin, who is in the attendees right now?
Done, thank you.
All right. What I would, Counselor Zied, I do see your hand. What I would like to do is take each one of these individually and Chair Sontag, hopefully, we can just have a back and forth conversation between the Planning Board and the committee here. And I don't want to take this to the wee hours. I think, Chair Sontag, you've got a long enough agenda tonight, as is. So once we get through the eight, then we'll take public comment, and then we'll proceed, continue the hearing after that. So why don't we start with the first one, the yard definition and setback requirements? Andy, do you want to just go to that section of the amended ordinance so folks can...
Yeah, I'll pull up the relevant sections as folks, if you'd like, sure.
While you're pulling it up, we can certainly just, there we go.
I mean, I'll defer. I don't know if Jennifer wants to offer anything as zoning administrator, feel free. We have discussed the language here, but...
Sure. I mean, Jennifer, why don't you take your stab at it? I think we'd like to hear from you since you are the administrator.
Sure. Good morning, or good evening, rather. The yard section and some of the setback specifics in the ordinance have caused confusion in the past as to exactly where they're measured to and how they cross-reference with some of the other definitions within the ordinance, such as building line and that. This whole section is largely an attempt to simply clean those up, clean up the cross-references and make them consistent with the way we have been interpreting it and hopefully alleviate some of the confusion that sometimes happens with applicants. There are a few items within that also hope to, they were in this section, they may have been moved out to a slightly different portion, but they're still in addressing yards. We were hoping to allow for some flexibility. And right now, the ordinance reads that decks are not actually permitted within the side yard setbacks or rear yard setbacks, although common practice had led this to be the case. It was not explicitly permitted. In our rewrite conversations, we looked at potentially allowing first floor decks up to 50% of the setback. For instance, if you have a 10-foot side yard setback, your deck could project five foot into that. That's still left a space between adjacent lots adequate to circulate, to maintain a house, while not lending to such rigid rigidity that adhering to the standard setback for an accessory element would.
Are there comments amongst counselors?
Yeah, I have a comment. So let's take first the unroofed deck structures that are projecting into yard setbacks. I mean, I just don't really have a feel of how common that is. I mean, the example that was given by the zoning enforcement officer is about, you know, say there's a 10-foot setback and you go five feet in or 20-foot setback, but what about in the more suburban parts of the city, you know, say the West End? Where there, do we have any larger setbacks? We're worried that this will lead to strange results.
I, in looking throughout the city, I mean, the largest residential setback we have is a 20-foot side yard. If you project 10 feet in, and even if both adjacent neighbors do that, that still leaves 20 feet between any element, you know, any deck element. And of course, these are, this is only in reference to non-roofed decks.
If I could speak to that, it sounds like maybe the council's concern is about folks maximizing too much expansion because of the extensive setbacks in larger areas. I'm wondering if their concern there is that maybe we have a cap on the size of those extensions and structures?
Well, I mean, I don't really have a, I don't really have a strong feeling about it, but I'm just imagining a situation where you have a house and, you know, this is both, this is side, front and rear. So theoretically, you could surround your house with decks by right and going into the setback. I just, it seems like a lot. I mean, I don't feel strongly about it because I don't know that it's going to happen, but just seems unusual.
Are there other counselors that have a strong feeling here or anyone on the Planning Board?
This is Rick. I have a question, maybe two questions. So the phrasing otherwise unroofed deck structures, does that, because the sentence before that talks about decks extending upward by more than 30 inches, does this new section that's underlined in red, if you said unroofed deck structures, no more than 30 inches above existing grade, may extend up to 50%? Would that be the same thing? Or is there something else in that otherwise that I'm not seeing?
Yeah, no, I think that was the intent there, I think, unless, yeah, we can tweak.
It might be clear to say that. And then my follow-up question is, what about that deck that is 30 inches high and has a 30-inch high railing all around it? Is that still allowed to go into the setback?
It would, and this is Jennifer speaking, I would interpret it to be that because the measurement of a deck is always to the deck surface, not to the railing. And I think the reason for the 30 inches is that a 30-inch deck does not require a railing by code.
Okay, thank you.
Well, maybe the way forward, because we have a lot to get through, we could just change the language to say, instead of otherwise common, say, unroofed decks extending up to 30 inches may project, but that. And if no one else minds having, you know, a deck on all four sides of a building, let's just move on.
I think the council's concern is a valid one. My sense is that probably because, only because for practical purposes, we probably would not run into a scenario like that. But it's a valid concern. I just, you're probably right that, you know, in all likelihood, we're not going to run into a scenario like that for a long while.
I mean, you might on Plum Island.
Sure, sure. Right, right.
So just a follow-up question, referring back to the definition of structures, which includes swimming pools. And it also includes fences, but fences are specifically dealt with in number six below. But are swimming pools, this is just point of information, are swimming pools required to stay entirely outside the setbacks?
Swimming pools have their own section, and they are required to be a six-foot setback regardless of the district.
I do think, though, if I may, Chair Shan, on item six, I see we're getting rid of the commas to make it clear that we're saying structures such as fences and landscape walls. Why don't we say fences and landscape walls may, let's just be, let's limit it to that.
That's fine.
Because I don't want, I don't want anyone to argue that, well, a deck is a structure that says as long, I can go up to seven feet high. That's not what's intended. So I think just say fences and landscape walls may be located within required. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, okay. Does anyone disagree? Okay, all right. Then the last one, I guess, on yards, and we can keep going, is, I just want to make sure I understand what's going on with mechanical equipment. So I'm a little confused. What, I mean, Jennifer, can you just do any kind of mechanical equipment? I mean, is there no limitation? Forget, I'm talking about screening. I'm not talking about screening. I'm just saying, right now, if I had like a heat pump, I can put it wherever I want?
You can put it right up to the property line right now. There is no regulation in the current. And so we were trying to address the fact that I don't think that was the original intent of the ordinance. And, but currently, we get a lot of questions about that. And of course, with these small yards, you know, every foot is significant, so.
Well, then, why don't we, I mean, again, I just want to be clear on this one. So we could make number four say, mechanical equipment pertinent to the property, right? Because that's what you mean. It's like HVAC stuff. So mechanical equipment pertinent to the property shall be permitted within the required side or rear yard. However, if greater than four feet in height shall be screened, et cetera, right?
Sure, that seems a reasonable clarification.
Again, is everyone on the same page? So as a policy basis, a recommendation of the council would be, yeah, you can do mechanical equipment, and we'll make that clear, but because they're not structures, they're different. But if it's four feet or higher off the ground, you must screen it.
Actually, I had a question about that following on that. The definition of structure is proposed to include mechanical equipment greater than four feet in height. And so, so we're doing that. And then here, we're saying any mechanical equipment greater than four feet in height, otherwise permitted within the required side and rear yard. So it almost, when I read it, it almost seemed as if mechanical equipment greater than four feet in height would be subject to the side and rear yard requirements. And this was implying that there's some exception somewhere about that. So it was confusing.
I got you. I think the way we solve that is, you go back a couple pages, so the definition of structure, excuse me, is number 46.
Yep.
And you just get rid of the greater than four feet in height because it's not relevant anymore. All mechanical equipment is a structure. And then we've just reworded this number four, you know, on the next page, to say it's allowed, even though it's a structure. But if it's four feet or higher, you have to screen it. Does that work, Rick?
Yeah, I just, I was confused, so that...
No, no, we just fixed it.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to clarify, that means all condensers and everything can be put right up on any property line at any time?
That's exactly right. And as long as they can be put up there by right, it's just if they're four feet or higher off the ground, you have to screen it.
Yeah, I don't mean to stir the pot, but I personally have an issue with that.
All right, well, yeah, let's air it out.
Well, I mean, I think in circumstances where there's plenty of room to put them closer to the house, they should be because otherwise, that's like, you know, I mean, in many cases, that's a direct affront to neighbors because they're loud and they're unpleasant to have and they're unsightly. And if you don't have a fence there, then it's essentially oftentimes perceived to essentially be in your own yard. So I mean, in other communities I've worked in, those do have to abide by setbacks. And oftentimes, those communities have setbacks of 20 feet And oftentimes, those communities have setbacks of twenty feet explicitly to keep them as far away from the neighbors as possible.
Gotcha.
Let me add to that, because there's an incident of that right of, of budding my street. They don't have the space for that. So I was assuming that all of these are gonna be really close to this main structure or the house. Because, you know, they're HVAC, they have to be connected. But you may be, might have a situation where it's right on the driveway and then the next house has driveway and then the house is there. I was thinking about requiring screening of some sort and having to do with noise.
Well, the noise is a bit harder to screen.
But should the, the screening?
The, the screening is included for those structures taller than four feet in, under the current proposal.
And as we know, the typical condenser is, is, you know, thirty inches high, three feet.
Yeah, it's not, it would not, it would not trigger. It would be less than, it is less than four feet. But it makes a lot of noise. I don't know if screening it with a little, you know, some sort of a fencing around it would make any difference or not.
It could make it worse, depending on how you do it.
No, if you wanna, if you wanna do noise attenuation, you need to say so.
Yeah.
You need to say so. So I mean, in Boston, for example, I've had projects in Southie where, you know, for reasons that were convenient for the client, we put the mechanical equipment far away from the building with a long conduit. But they have noise attenuation regulations. And that's how we were able to do that. Here, as Leah's pointing out, we, we're not capturing that nuance, just so you know.
Yeah, not only that, but you're giving permission to to put it right up next, potentially right up next to someone else's, under someone else's window, given, you know, how dense the South End is.
Right, you could, you could run the conduit as far as you want.
Yeah.
You're right. Well, it sounds like that one is controversial, I mean, because it could, it could, it could, you know, lead Jennifer to more conflict than what you're seeing today.
Yeah, please, please bear in mind that that is the situation currently where you, there is not a regulation regarding mechanical equipment per se. And do you also remember, as you think through this moving forward, you know, even if we don't resolve it tonight, that it's not just the condensing units for air conditioning and heating, this is also cool equipment and things like that, so.
But isn't, isn't what we're missing here to make this work, noise attenuation? Because again, if it were silent, if it were silent, it wouldn't create problems, right?
Well, that is always a visual problem, but I agree that sound is the biggest.
So we've, we've dealt with a visual problem with a policy saying if it's over yay high, you said four feet, we could change it. It has to be screened from view. Did that. Why don't we, why can't we do a noise attenuation clause here and then move on?
Who's going to measure the noise, though?
Yeah, I will say for practical purposes, it's, I agree with the council about having a provision in the regulations. But I think for practical purposes and monitoring enforcement, that might be a bit on the wheel deep, but.
Well, I mean, I I don't know about enforcement, but I know in other cities, the way they do it is you, you have to provide the spec specification. You know, so when you apply to get your permit to hook the thing up, you know, it comes with a spec and they can calculate how loud it's gonna be. But I guess if we're, we're just dealing with sort of small-scale homeowners here, if you don't think that's practical, then I think you do need to, or the group, rather, needs to discuss whether they wanna reverse the current policy, where we don't have, it's the Wild West. I'm not, I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm just saying, let's decide what we wanna do.
I'd say go with what we are recommending here because we need something. And if it continues to be a problem on the noise issue, it gets revisited. Would that work for you, Jennifer?
I think something is, is a step forward from where we are.
Yeah. Yeah, and I wanna help you that way, so.
What about, what about the four feet? Because I, I mean, we should listen to Leah, she's saying typical is thirty inches. We should, we should say more than thirty inches.
This is Andy. I'm fine with any of those adjustments myself.
Well, I think that the, there is a thirty-inch, but they're often on a base, like a one-foot base. So you may actually be up to forty inches, which means you're closer to the four feet, right? I'd be more comfortable with the four feet because I'm not sure that, I'm not sure the, the screening is gonna, is gonna necessarily look good in many cases.
I see, I see what you're saying. So you'd rather have a thirty-ice, thirty-inch-high piece of mechanical equipment on screen than have to fence all these things, yeah.
Yeah.
This is where it gets really tricky, because sometimes it might be on a platform that's eighteen inches and it might be, you know, thirty-seven, forty, forty-nine inches. I mean, it's tricky territory.
Yeah.
Uh, well, okay, again, I wanted, I I know we have a heavy, heavy load tonight. Then that one, let's just say, four feet in height measured from grade. Measured from grade, let's at least get that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on yards? Because we, we're still on number one.
Yeah, this is Don Walters. Jennifer, a question for you. How would this section of the ordinance impact, if at all, a, a homeowner placing solar panels on the property line less than four feet in height?
Well, they have a stat, they have a statutory exemption that under, under chapter forty-eight, Don, there's a carve-out already.
Well, okay, I'll defer to you, but I've seen in other communities, they do have, I thought the exemption allows certain restrictions. Other towns have restrictions other than New Bay Port, so it just cannot be unreasonable. But I'll, again, for the sake of time, I'll move on.
I would like to acknowledge the, the point that Glenn Richards made, which is in the, the comment on the side there about the little free libraries. I think we, you'll probably need to deal with this at some point because we may run into a First Amendment issue with, if we allow, if we allow little free libraries and don't allow other than the, or signs within that front yard. So I, I'm very much in support of little free libraries and I'm very much in support of number five. And I think they run into each other the way they're written right now. So we should probably maybe move forward with it the way it is, but recognize that we need to do something about it in the future.
Yeah, I, I can, we did actually work on our, uh, uh, street regulations some years back, maybe six years ago. So those little free libraries are actually illegal under the, under the municipal code. Nothing to do with zoning. Those are encroachments on the public way. And you're right, Rick, if you, if you try to distinguish between little libraries and political speech, it will be struck down. So basically, you have to either allow it all or ban it all. It's that simple. So I recommend, don't touch it, just let's move on.
Okay.
Is there anything, so do we wanna do this by section or do we want to just do the eight items of substantive discussion?
Let's do the eight. We, we're on a roll. We've done one.
All right, so the next one was the letter permit for accessory structures.
Yeah, I, I, on that one, I'll, I'll kick off a discussion. I, I mean, as long as there's some paper trail, I, I understand why, and and Counselor Z wants to speak on this. I, I understand, we should, we should have a piece of paper to account for these accessory structures. I don't know that a letter permit is really the right way. I don't feel strongly about it. Because just typically, people think of building permits. So I know in Boston, they just, they don't, it's the same form and it's kept in the same place. But instead of calling it a building permit, they call it a use permit. So that's all, that's, those are my two cents.
This is Andy. Jennifer, can you speak at all to how this, you know, the really sort of relationship, I guess, between the billing office and zone and the zoning administrative position and how this has been handled? Or might, your thoughts on that here? Because clearly, there's a, there's a little bit of a gap. It sounds like we're filling here between whether or not building permits are always called for for some of these things. And then whether or not there's essentially a review to make sure it's compliant with setbacks. And then we sometimes find that things are not, and there wasn't any permit that was triggered through the billing office. So there's no other mechanism that's called for in the ordinance that we're trying to sort of fill that gap.
Yeah, it, this is actually one of the biggest problems that I have where people call the building department. They say, do I need a permit for my shed that's a hundred and twenty square feet? They're told no, and they go marching on their way to then install a shed too close to the property line or exceeding the lot coverage. And then their neighbor complains and we have to go back and enforce it. The letter permit that we were proposing is essentially just what you're suggesting, Councilor Agerman. It is, it is a single sheet of paper that is issued from the planning department. Because the building department cannot issue a, you know, there is not a building permit required under state building code. So this is, if there was a conception that this was a complicated building permit application, it's not. It is a, it is a single, can be hand-drawn sketch of the property with a, some basic calculations about lot coverage that I help an applicant through. But it serves to allow the planning office to address lot coverage and setback and have a piece of paper on file when the neighbor calls. We did just have an instance on Prospect Street where someone went ahead and built one. And unfortunately, you know, the building inspector and I had to go out and this individual had to take it down and they were able to build a new shed to replace their old, but they had to make it smaller than, than they had already constructed. So we're really trying to help homeowners not find themselves in that situation.
Counselor Z, do you wanna speak?
I, I did, thank you. I just, I, I do oppose this. I, primarily, I just didn't wanna create another permit animal that has to become its own, its own thing. I, I respect that it's not considered overly onerous or difficult. But the existence of a permit or a piece of paper doesn't change the fact that, you know, the builder or the owner is, is, is responsible for the structure. And if they do exceed, then they, they do so at their own risk. And I think if, if, you know, I understand the ease that it would provide, maybe if a neighbor calls to complain. But, but at the same time, I mean, that, that's the right, the risk you run when you build something. And I, I think it's okay to leave that risk with the person who's building it, the homeowner or otherwise. And I'm just, you know, I, I, I don't think people think in this direction, as we said, dealing with smaller-scale homeowners, for example, putting a shed up. You know, how many of them, what percentage of people think to call? And, and then, you know, how many just, just go up and we've never heard of and aren't a problem? So I could see this expanding to other things and I, I don't, I don't think that that's a good idea. I just think it becomes another thing that, that has its own infrastructure and care. And while I respect, again, the, the position that Jennifer is bringing up and wanting to have something to paper this, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't see a value to it in that same way. So I don't think we should have it. And, but that doesn't mean that if somebody does break the rules, that, you know, doesn't get enforced against them. That's the risk that they, you know, that they need to, to take on and consider when they put something up.
Jennifer, how many times have you had to go out and have this structure moved or taken down?
I can, I mean, it's a handful of times. I would say it's a couple a year, quite honestly, that someone's halfway through and they have to move it or change their plan. And, and I do, it is a constant surprise when people start. It, it, but to Counselor Z's comment, it is true, you know, we, we may, uh, we, we will still enforce it after the fact. It's just a little easier if we can catch them ahead of time.
Understood the proactiveness. Counselor Wallace?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, we had something similar to this on Arlington Street. I don't know if the shed ever went in, but in a way, I, I do agree with it because it, it helps the neighbors that maybe don't have the resources to pay for legal representation or whatnot. And the resident I was dealing with, you know, I said, do you have something in writing where they're gonna put the shed? And she said, no. So I think having something in writing would, would be helpful. With the letter permit, I know that in the wetland, the local wetlands ordinance, they have a letter permit. And if, if we do go this route, maybe it wouldn't be called a letter permit. Or if it is, maybe, you know, you may have to spell out the procedures and not just call it a letter permit, but kind of explain it a little more, just so everybody's on the same page. But my one question is, how many of these do you think you would have? Like, how much additional work do you think it would be for you, Jennifer, if, if we have something like this?
I, I actually think it's less work to address it proactively than it is retroactively. In, in truth, we have something we've been using right now only as an administrative thing within the office. It's not something required in the ordinance, obviously. We are calling it an accessory structure permit. It's just, it's, it's a way that we can give people that, that reassurance that I have looked at it and that they meet the ordinance if they put it in as proposed.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know the answer tonight, but that's interesting. I mean, maybe there's specific things we could have it before. I don't know if it needs to be called a permit or if it's just a form. But I think it's not a bad idea, but we would wanna keep it simple. So, all right, thank you.
Counselor Devlin?
There we go. Thank you. So the first question is, do you anticipate having a fee associated with this?
We had not contemplated a fee where it was just a basic form. The online system allows for it quite simply. And so we did not, we did not consider a fee at this point.
And you were talking about one of the requirements of being a diagram or sketch. How would one know, especially in a densely packed area, where their property line was?
Again, if, if we get, if we're talking about putting the shed close enough to the property line where it is in question, whether it's in compliance or not, we look for an actual survey. But there are many instances where the setback required is six feet and someone's, you know, not so much in the South End. But, you know, over in the R1 and they're putting the shed twenty feet off the property line. And and, and so we don't require one. It, it's, it really is property by property.
If you've gone to two or three a week, my, my, I mean, sorry, a month, my, my assumption would be that those are the close calls. You know, if someone is twenty feet away from the property line, they're unlikely to get a complaint from their neighbors. You know, maybe other than the lot coverage portion of that. But I, I just, I, I see this leaning towards, well, you know, usually we used to ask for a sketch. And yeah, you know where your property line, I happen to know where my property line is, but you know where your property line is. But we really, we need a, we need a survey, so then a simple application, you know, for something that people have done for a long time in this city, becoming something that's much more complex. And now they're getting a survey or, you know, and, and, and having that added expense to put in, you know, a utility shed. So those are my concerns.
Yeah, this is Andy. This is exactly why we're looking for feedback, because we need to know where that, that meter sort of falls, the, the, the policy here as far as what like level of documentation, because it's really a question of proactively documenting or having things confirmed versus dealing with them potentially after the fact. And as Counselor Devon pointed out, you know, how much process is involved for different things? And those are really ultimately speaking, policy-level questions to a degree.
And I, I lean towards, you know, if it's a two or three times a month problem and we're trying to be more efficient and proactive. I, I just think, I think the amount of shed, utility sheds that go in in this community are probably much greater than that. So that you're actually getting the, the smaller percentage of the problem. And, and I think the residents on, on the whole would rather have the process be easier. And then have, you know, for the, for the couple of exceptions that, that, you know, didn't plan properly and, and need their, their shed to be moved. So anyway, thank you.
Counselor Wallace, I saw your hand is still up. Do you have another question?
No, I don't. I will lower it.
All right, thank you. All right, I saw Counselor Agerman was first and then Counselor Z.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I, I, this is not one I feel strongly about, but actually, thinking of it as an attorney, I like the idea that I can at least get one of these pieces of paper for my client if I need to. So I mean, i- if you don't, either way, whether you pass this reform or not, for Jennifer, she's not gonna be going out and tagging people for not having shed permits. That's not gonna happen. But it, it does allow an owner really to protect themselves by saying, hey, I, I wanna do this right. I have a shed and I have this piece of paper from Jennifer and I'm good to go and it's in the file. And if any neighbor or lender or whatever, you know, asks for it, they have the piece of paper. That's the way I was looking at it.
Can, can I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
Another alternative, short of putting it in the ordinance, would, would. Another alternative, short of putting it in the ordinance, would, would simply be to offer that piece of paper as a zoning compliance memo. As we're doing now, it's just, you know, I, I think as we were working on the rewrite, there was, you know, like Andy's saying, we were putting these out there to see where the, where the meter is. And if, if we don't think that this is the right way to go, we can still offer that, that assurance to an owner and offer that compliance review with a zoning compliance memo.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Um, Counselor Z?
I, I just wanted to key in on Counselor Devlin and Counselor Aigerman's comments combined. And, and that is that I can certainly understand, as Counselor Aigerman stated, why a, a, a resident might like to have this permit as, as sort of protection for themselves. But the question is, at what expense does that protection come? So I'm basically running this down logically and thinking, okay, a resident comes in and they do have good intentions and they, they request this. And they provide whatever level of documentation and they get the, they get the letter permit or whatever we're calling it, whatever form it takes. And then there is a dispute. And so the, the first thing the resident that put the shed in is going to do is obviously pull out the letter and say, look, I, I did this and I have this. The first thing that the other resident is going to do is say, well, what's the, what was the basis for issuing that letter permit? And that's exactly what Counselor Devlin's point is, is that now you have to be able to defend, okay, we only had a sketch. And so the natural tendency of this over the years will be that the requirements will become more rigorous and onerous as we transfer the responsibility for compliance from the owner to the city. And so it, not only is it get harder over time, but then you are going to have to have a formal survey because you're going to want the letter permit to be defensible. So I just think that it, in the end, it, it may end up, I think, opening or exposing legal challenges that, you know, essentially the beef is going to be with the city now as opposed to, to neighbors. So I understand the other side of the argument, but I'm just suggesting that as, as policymakers for the city, that that's kind of what we have to consider is where now we are inserting ourselves into that and any disputes will, would likely be pointed at us because that the city would be, have, have been the one to issue that permit.
Counselor Devlin?
Uh, yeah, I, I was going to suggest to, you know, to Jen, Jennifer kind of came in and made the suggestion. But you could also write it as a sort of safe harbor that if you do do this, then the presumption is you did it correctly. But that it's not a requirement. So it, and Jennifer, I think is saying the same thing. So, you know, I, my, my, my concern is I don't want to look at this as a lawyer. I want to look at this as a resident. And, and as the residents will, because we're not lawyers here, we're city councilors. And that, you know, residents are the ones that are going to have to bear this burden. And, and I, I, the more we do this, the more we put in here, the more neighbors can use it to bash each other over the head. Rather than, you know, just talk to each other before things go in. You know, if you're going to put in a shed, it's a good idea to go talk to your neighbors about it, especially if you're going to put it close to their property line.
All right. I, so Jennifer, might I make the suggestion that you guys take this section, section eight and reword it using some of the language that you use, specifically making it a zoning compliance memo? And let's move on.
Okay, we, we could look at that, but I'm, I'm certainly can. And I'm also curious about maybe an alternative that takes it out based on some of the other, the other comments. Is that, is, is it possible to have two versions?
Well, if I could, this is Andy. Uh, I, there's two different things going on here, right? One is if we have the letter permit required in this ordinance, regardless of what it's called, the question here is whether or not there's a requirement that one get it in advance, right? So that's the, regardless of what we call it, we need to know whether or not there's an expectation for folks to apply for that in advance.
Yeah, I, I, I think what you're hearing is, at least from the counselors who've spoken, we haven't, we haven't heard from planning board members. But it's not worth it to us. We, we think the better way to go, what I'm hearing is if a homeowner wants to protect themselves, they can get a zoning compliance letter.
Got it. We can add language to that effect and, and make the adjustment that removes the requirement.
Let's do it. I mean, well, does the board agree? I mean, we're meeting together.
Yeah, no, I was, I was thinking about it as, is it possible to put something that's optional in the zoning code? How would you write that?
Well, you can always get a zoning compliance letter, right, Jennifer?
Yeah, so that they're requested all the time by
Yeah, it's always at the option. Yeah, it's always at the option. You can do that.
Okay. As a homeowner, I don't know that's an option, but I suppose if I were doing something significant, I'd be working with a, you know, an attorney or a contractor who would know to ask for that. So if that's available and people know that it's available, I would go with that, that option. It's not required, but if you want it, you can get it.
I support that.
And me also.
All right. Sounds like there's some amount of consensus there. Andy and Jennifer, can you?
We'll do.
Okay. All right. Why don't we move on to number three then? Setbacks for detached accessory structures? Do you want to go to that section, Andy?
Sorry, I just went up the wrong slide one second.
No worries. Jennifer, would you speak to this one?
Sure. Um, if I recall exactly what this one is. We were trying to clarify the exact dimensions that are required. Well, first off, we needed to fix the and in the or, which I think everyone's familiar with. And while we were at that, requiring a structure to be not only six feet off of the adjacent property line. It also needs to be 10 feet away from a primary structure on the adjacent lot. But the other language changes in here just have to do with the clarification on the 22 by 24 foot dimension that had been previously in the ordinance, trying to give a little bit more flexibility for the exact configuration. It does not need to be a 22 by 24 foot rectangle, but it cannot exceed that square footage and it cannot have a face longer than 24 feet.
Are there any comments amongst the counselors?
Well, I just have a question for the board really, or for counselors, which is, you know, 528 feet, that's been the law in the report, what, for at least 50 years? So, but it, now that I see it, it looks big. I don't have a problem with it, but is that the right number?
If, if I can just speak to that, that's essentially a two, standard two car garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So here's an, I'd like to bring up an example we had years ago where someone built one of these. It was right on the property line, but it was whatever, and it was several feet away from the house. And then they built an underground passage in order to connect it to the house. It was still considered detached. I went and looked at the plans and the planning board chair at the time just threw his hands up in the air. And he said, they're just being creative. I mean, I'm trying to, to figure out what's best for land use in the city. We do want a separation between, with this, it looks like we want clearly a separation between the accessory structure and the abutters property. Does it matter if it's detached from the house or not? What's, what's that piece of it? I'm, I'm probably just not thinking it all the way through, but I'd like some clarification on why it needs to be detached. Is this just?
I think otherwise it would need to comply with the setbacks of the primary structure in that, in that district.
Precisely.
And it becomes ma- massive. So I have another example on another street where the house goes on forever. And it's on a tight lot because it wasn't separated, but they wanted their two or three car garage in there. So they met the setbacks around the outside of the primary structure, but they attached it and it looks like a monstrosity. So the detaching then makes sense. And because this is standard two car garage size, I think if you want to say 528 square feet and then put in parentheses, the calculation that got there, it might help people understand this weird number. So 24 by, I, I don't do the math, 24 by 12 or whatever it is, put that in parentheses to just clarify that.
Well, but that's where you're changing is, uh, we did use to say 22 by 24.
Yeah, 22 by 24.
Now, now we're saying, you know, so long as no exterior walls more than 24 feet, we don't really care how you get to the 528.
And you know, it doesn't bother anybody to just leave that number in there?
No, because if you say it's got to be 22 by 24, then you're dictating the shape of it as well.
You're right. Yeah. And I was just trying to get to the calculation. Okay. But that's, that can be explained easily, easily enough when someone asks the question.
Well, I mean, as far as the underground thing, I'll pipe it up on that. That's, that's a little letter C, which we're adding. Be separated from the principal building or structure and subject minimum of three feet. I would assume that just means a grade. Cause this is a visual, this is a visual regulation.
Okay. Yeah.
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 Fine. So if they want to, if they want to, you know, do stall lot 17 or whatever, they'll dig a tunnel in it. That's fine. I think.
Yes.
Not a visual. All right. Are there any other comments on this one? All right.
I was just going to say, just the obvious, which is that this is one of those cases where there are probably hundreds of buildings that don't, hundreds of garages that don't comply with this as, as pre-existing non-conforming structures. And so I just wonder whether we're in, in a dense neighborhood, whether we are requiring, and I understand this is the way the zoning has been, but whether we're requiring new construction essentially to be out of character with existing development. You know, my, my garage, which is probably 24 by 22 is probably, it's probably three or three and a half feet off the property line. And you know, I, I've seen so many garages that are right there. So, you know, if we, if it's okay, if that's, you know, as a matter of policy, we want to change the character of our neighborhoods to be less dense. That's really what this is saying. I just want to, you know, point that out that we're, this is a, this, like many other things, is, is, and I think that was part of the comprehensive zoning rewrite. When you were looking at the, at, at trying to divide the districts and, and look at what the existing land use pattern was. Probably it's too big a deal to address it in this housekeeping amendment, but I just wanted to point that out.
Oh, I see Jennifer's hands up and then Counselor Z. Jennifer?
Just as a point of clarification, it, it is all, this is the existing dimension of the six foot setback. We are not creating new zoning as part of this particular rewrite. Okay.
I, I understand that. That's what I was, I was saying. I was, we're trying to try and not trying to, not trying to fix everything in the city at this point. We're, we saw this issue that we will probably have to face at some point in the future.
Counselor Z?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to speak up and, and, and support Rick's concern because I, I, I mean, the parentheses there where it says, south end, question mark at the end. That, that's, that's really referring a lot to my ward and maybe to some degree to Ward Two. But it's, it's an extremely fair point that when you drive down almost any street, you, you're going to see garages, you know, well within that six feet. And so this is a different requirement. I just don't, I didn't speak up because I don't really know what the answer is. I don't know if lowering the six feet is really what, what makes any sense or what have you. So I think it, I think it is still something that needs to be addressed. Uh, I don't know if it's addressed here or if it's addressed at some point when the lot requirements and setbacks are at some point revisited. So I, I just didn't want sort of to go without saying that, that, you know, it, it is, it's different than what we have now. And, and so there's, you know, it's not homogeneous or similar.
I, I just want to quickly comment on that. Well, I, I, I have a lot of respect for that comment. That goes to the heart of everything in zoning. So if you want to debate the six foot for the accessory structures, you really have to debate every setback for every structure in the south end in particular.
Uh, no, I, I agree. And that's why I think maybe it is something that gets addressed during a setback debate. Because there's a lot, there's a lot of considerate debate that could be had about whether the setbacks make any real life sense as they are now for the south end in particular. So I'll just focus on my ward, but again, maybe not germane to, to tonight or to this proposal.
Yeah, this is Andy. I would just remind the folks again that we were trying to clean up language here. We realized that we're, we're treading into some discussion into the policy level questions. But that's also, you can notice here at the discussion that some of this is questions about policy that's been established for some time, like the six foot setback, for instance.
Sure.
Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm what Rick had said, that that's the biggest thing I took away from my meeting with the zoning consultant and, and the, the zoning overhaul was, and it made the most sense to me, was to try to make existing zoning with the zoning consistent with as much as possible, the existing characteristics that are on the ground so that you have less non-conformities and you make residents' lives easier so that, and, and probably the boards, you know, planning board and zoning boards' lives easier. So that people to do the normal things that they do to their homes, they're not out of compliance or in non-conformance. Or to a lesser extent they are. And so they, they can get permits more easily. They can do some basic things to the house more easily. And it also can lessen the load on our planning board and our CBA. And, and I, I, I was looking forward to that zoning rewrite coming out. I, I've been told only recently that it's not happening. But I, I thought this, we were, I don't know why we wouldn't try to cha- change things while we were at it. You know, if, if that, if that was the goal of a two or three or four year project that the planning department worked very closely on. I don't know why we wouldn't be trying to change these things as we, as we go over them now.
And this is Andy, just to be clear with the zoning rewrite project, we, we reached consensus over some chunks of the ordinance, but we were unable to reach consensus over enough pieces that a full ordinance could be brought forward, which was the original hope. We did not have enough monies to pay for the consultant or staff time available to do the entire ordinance at once. And as you can see here, discussing provision by provision, even existing provisions, whether or not to, to change, tweak language there. When we go through that and try to involve every provision of the ordinance, we come to a basically grinding halt. So what we tried to do is move, this is the first chunk of that rewrite, trying to get chunks or sections of the ordinance done piece by piece. Rather than trying to do the whole thing at once. So we realized that this section here does touch dimensional requirements. But we, we weren't trying to address, for instance, that, that section, I think the council was mentioning was that the dimensional table, which is a much larger, I think, policy debate that might be had on every single column and row within that table as to what uses and which districts might require which dimensional standards. We were hoping here to clarify some of the language about these, you know, details, if you will. But changing, say, for instance, the R2 district into two sub-districts, that's another whole policy level discussion that we figured might take even months. I mean, short-term rental units, for instance, went for a year and, and we haven't seen an ordinance thus far. And so we're, we're trying to do what we think is manageable, I guess, at this point in this section.
Well, if I may, so first of all, let me follow up on that. I, I don't know what consensus you're talking about. So because I, we, nothing ever got presented to us. So I don't know where, my query would be what consensus? The second part is, this is the third time that you brought up the short-term rental unit while I've been, been involved, like I've been on a, on a, if you have something you need to talk to me about, Director Port, give me a call. But the short-term rental unit, that's at least in plan, in licensing permits, and that's the only place it is. So it shouldn't have been discussed anywhere else, is, is, was flawed. And, and KP Law agreed with me that it was flawed. So it's being worked on right now. That has nothing to do with what I'm talking about. We had a several year project. I, I, I don't, I answer my first question. What, what consensus were you talking about that we couldn't reach consensus?
Yeah, just to be clear, that wasn't a criticism of the short-term rental units. Yeah, that, that wasn't a criticism of that. That was just pointing out that the policy level debates can take a while before the council or planning board or anyone else, uh, before we can agree on language that could be adopted. The, on any issue sometimes, Waterfront West, for instance, we've had numerous discussions over the years about that, hearings and so forth. So in the, the zoning advisory committee was the group that I was discussing or referencing there. The zoning advisory committee had been set up to work with essentially reps from the planning board, CBA, city council staff to work with the consultant or without the consultant on different sections of the ordinance. There was consensus amongst that group. And as you pointed out correctly, that had not gone to the council, that dimensional table with two subjects, or say for the R2 district, which was one of the recommendations from the consultant, has not made its way to the council. There was various debates and opinions even amongst that group. has not made its way to the council. There was various debates and opinions even amongst that group as to whether or not that should be brought forward to the council. So you're right that there wasn't consensus over every piece of that. Within the advisory committee, there was consensus over different sections or different pieces, but we were unable to meld them all together into a new ordinance, a whole ordinance, because.
So can we get back to what we were trying to discuss here? I don't want us to go down the rabbit hole of short-term rental units. Counselor Devlin, was there another question about the section we were just discussing on accessory structures? And I see Counselor Igerman has his hand up. I mean, we've.
Let me clarify, the, the was what consensus were you talking about? Because it sounds like we have some consensus here. And I, I thought generally in discussing the zoning rewrite, that there was consensus on making the, the code more reflective of practical considerations on the ground. I think Director Port, Port's answer was he didn't feel he got it on this zoning advisory committee. Is, is that accurate?
I felt, this is going back a little bit, but I had felt that there was consensus amongst most of the committee on that. There was some dissenting opinion on that, and we were not able to get a sponsor for that piece going to the council, which is where I point out that even though the committee might have had as a whole, maybe seventy-five, eighty, ninety percent of membership agreed on that piece, we weren't able to get to a package that was ready for the council, that a council was willing to sponsor. So to your question about consensus, one of the key pieces we always have to consider is, do we have something that is, is, you know, ready for sponsorship, if you will?
I, I would just have everybody keep in mind that we've had a planning board member who's well-respected and then, and two city councillors who, you know, could, could be, could be, wouldn't mind seeing, or at least would, would have a discussion about making some of these changes as we move forward. Thank you. That's it for me, Madam Chair.
Counselor Igerman?
Yeah, I just wanted to validate that, that, that discussion. Yeah, we, we, we did a few years ago, get some actual data on lot configurations and setbacks, and especially in the South End. And, and I, I don't want any councillor or board member to think that, you know, we could never revisit that again. It's just right here, you know, this particular language about accessory buildings and structures is a citywide regulation. And, and, you know, it's going to have to apply in the West End and the South End. So I, I just like to, I don't want to blow off that discussion. Just, it's just, we can't fix it here. That's all I was gonna say.
Right. Agreed. Um, so it does seem like there's consensus on this one, Andy. Maybe it's time to move on to the next one, number four, which is the joint public hearings on proposed zoning amendments.
Counselor Z's got his hand up.
Counselor Zed?
I was just going to speak to this one since I think I'm the one that I, that initiated it, but I can wait if you want Director Port first.
I was just gonna let it get brought up so everyone could see it if they weren't looking at their screens now.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Counsel, you wanted the language from the ordinance amendment. Yeah, yeah, sure. So, yeah, the, the language in the amendment, I'll pull that up here. Speaks to the requirement that there be a joint public hearing. So let me just scroll through that section. Having a joint public hearing, so you see in this phrase right here, has jointly held a public hearing. This process of joining a joint hearing has been in place for, for years. The city council and planning board have held that joint hearing for at least ten or eleven years now. I can't speak to the timeframe before that per se, but I do think that's been pretty constructive for the feedback or the loops that go back and forth between planning board members and city council members about the changes. I defer to the council and planning board as to how you want to handle this going forward. You don't have to have a joint hearing. But it makes a little bit of a disconnect, I would say, between the dialogue and results in a little bit more confusion if there's debate in one area, the other board hasn't necessarily been there, has to then loop back in to, to look at that issue again. So I just, to me, it seems there's an efficiency from trying to have that discussion together, but I understand there are arguments otherwise.
I would agree on that one. I can't speak for Chair Sonton, but I think there are times where it just makes sense for all of us to be in the same, you know, Zoom room, for lack of a better way to put it. Hopefully we'll be in person soon enough. But, you know, we do need to, there, there are certainly more benefits to having us in the same room discussing something than trying to understand between meetings, what's going on between the two groups. So I agree with the joint hearing. Counselor Z, you want to speak to that?
I do. Thank you. I just want to make sure my position's clear. I, I, I'm not advocating against joint hearings. I've participated in many over the years. I understand the benefit. What I am advocating against is making it a rule of law that there must be a joint hearing. The process for initiating and passing zoning is already created and set by state law. And I think you're just handing people something over which to contest, you know, an ordinance. If there is not a joint hearing, and there could not be a joint hearing for a variety of reasons. Again, even though it's preferred and better, and I'm not disagreeing or arguing that point with anybody, I just don't see that, why does it need to be written into the ordinance, something that's, as, as stated, has already by, by sort of a standard practice been done for ten years. But let's say that there are scheduling issues, or frankly, maybe there is a time where the two, the two bodies are not, for whatever reason, able to work together or getting along to work together. That, that should not inhibit the city council, which does have the ability to pass zoning from, from moving forward in conjunction with state law, which prescribes, again, a process and a timeline. So my, my suggestion here is, is not that we stop meeting jointly or that anything change about how we've done zoning in the past many years, the five I've been on and the five or so before that, it sounds like. I'm just suggesting that I don't see what value it adds to adding it to the ordinance.
Chair Sonton?
Yes, I'd like to speak to that. I agree that it, it works very well to have these joint public hearings. And we always do it. And I can't imagine to Counselor Zed's point of when we wouldn't do that. In fact, we've had some very contentious discussions and in particular, over the Brown School, the planning board made a recommendation, which is the only role we have. And I always remind members when we come into these that our output is either recommend, recommend with some other considerations or don't recommend. And we've done all of that. I, I do want to keep it and I want to formalize it. I would like to suggest that, and I don't know if this is, needs to be in this, in this paragraph, but there are times when the city council, as is their prerogative, sponsor a zoning amendment and the zoning board, I mean, sorry, the planning board never sees it until the meeting has already been, the joint public hearing has already been scheduled. And we may not have our own meeting prior to that date. And so we come with our individual preparations, but we haven't had a chance to discuss it among ourselves. And so my suggestion here is, is that we write something in to that sixty-day period where the planning board shall schedule or may schedule, let's put it that way, a meet, a meeting of its own to discuss the amendment before it goes to joint public hearing. There are other board members who have any?
Um, I think that this is in addition to what is prescribed by state law. So as Counselor Zed said, so I, I understand his concern about adding this word as kind of restricting us and, you know, being kind of creating a hoop that we have to jump through very carefully. So for example, if we hold a joint, joint public hearing, which we do now without this word in the ordinance, and one board, you know, the planning board closes its hearing, but the committee on planning and development doesn't close its hearing, are we, is the hearing, are we still adhering to a joint, a required joint hearing? So I think there are, there are, this may create some, some problems that we that we don't really want to anticipate at this point. I also think that as it is now, if we hold a joint public hearing, there is nothing to prevent the planning board from also holding a separate public hearing. And I wonder whether by adding this word joint, whether that would restrict us in a way that we don't want to be restricted. So I, I think we have more flexibility without the word jointly in there, if I understand this correctly. I may not understand this correctly. But I, I feel that this may tie our hands a little bit more than we want them tied at this point. Right now, I think we have the flexibility to have both a joint public hearing and the statutory required separate public hearing by the planning board. And which we, which we now combine with, with a joint public hearing. So I'm, I'm not really sure that this is necessary and, and really a positive change.
So Counselor Igerman and then Leah.
Well, I mean, first, I, I I was kind of surprised it didn't already say that all the meetings were joint, which it doesn't. I was kind of a surprise to me. But what I'm hearing from at least some councillors and, and board members is they kind of like the language to be vague. And right now, what the language says just copies what state law requires. So it doesn't say that the planning board and the city council have to have their meeting together. That's up to us. We, we do that. And I, I share what others have said, where I do think it's fruitful for us to meet jointly. I think everyone agrees on that. Even when we do disagree, because it's good to, you know, make claim why we're disagreeing. And that's fine. And then the planning board can make their recommendation. So maybe the way forward, I, I, again, I another, here we are meeting jointly tonight. I think the benefit is what you're hearing is, you know, you need eight votes to change this. So the safer course may be to strike the word jointly, move on.
Yeah, this is Andy. If I could follow that by suggesting we just replace that with this, that each, the city council and planning board have held the, have the hearing and leave it at that, like you said.
No, 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 that, that's different because.
You want to leave it to the bare minimum, just the planning board has to hold the hearing. Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I, I like it the way it is, the way it says today, planning board and city council. And then if we decide to do it jointly, as we've done historically, we can. And if we don't want to, we don't have to. And then also by not changing the language, we don't have to worry, Rick doesn't have to worry that you're precluded from having additional public hearings if you want, so long as you honor your sixty-five-day state mandated deadline.
Okay. And then you can voluntarily decide, you know, whether you want to continue the pattern or not.
Yeah, I mean, let's hear from Leah, but, but that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Well, I was just gonna say really quickly that philosophically, I think it's really important that we're forced to meet together. So I think it's important to have the language here because I think once we remove that, then we don't, we're not forced to have this face-to-face time, which I think is really beneficial.
Bonnie?
Yeah, that's where I was going. I'm afraid if it's taken out, there could be decisions made without input from the planning board. And there would be nothing in the ordinance that says that we even make a recommendation. If you were to take out joint public hearing, then I would want to see inserted a requirement that the planning board make a recommendation before the city council consider it for adoption.
I would just add that even on a philosophical level, I mean, I feel like we have so few opportunities to engage with one another. And, you know, this is, we're on, we're on Zoom now and it's even worse than ever. I think it's just really important that we are mandated to, to, to discuss.
I, I hear you, but point, point of order, just the, 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 the requirement of a recommendation of a planning board is going to stay in there. That's on the next page. That's a, that's a different requirement. And that's.
Okay, good. I didn't see that here.
Yeah, Bonnie, I, I would also note, I think it's worth clarifying to Bonnie's point, the state statute which supersedes here clarifies, you know, basic requirements for zoning in Massachusetts municipalities requires that the planning board be given an opportunity to comment. But there's a period, remember, there's a period of time that if the planning board does not act or provide a recommendation, the council does have the latitude to move ahead one way or the other. So.
Counselor Igerman, you still have your hand up?
I'll, I'll take it down. I mean, it, it sounds like we're at loggerheads. I mean, there are some that feel that there is a, a policy benefit to mandating the joint meeting. And I, I was trying to avoid it, but I, I think we just, we're just gonna have to face it. You have, you'll have to tell, when we meet again, we'll have to take a vote and decide what our recommendation is to the council.
Okay. All right. I would like to move on. I mean, it is eight twenty-five. We've been at this for almost an hour and a half. We have gotten through four of the eight. So the next one, inclusion preservation of exterior sheathing. Andy, can you go to that one, please? And Counselor Zed, I know your hand is already up, so why don't you go on and start speaking?
Thank you. Yeah, this was one that, that I had, had, was probably one of the most important ones to me. I, I viewed the, the inclusion of exterior sheathing as demolition as a very substantive change and one that I would oppose. I, I, I did meet with Director Port and with, with zoning officer Blanchet, and we kind of talked about some different examples. And I noted several where, you know, sheathing was removed to allow for insulation from the outside in or for running of new wires or for allowing for, you know, enhancing the structure from the outside. And, and so I really strongly feel that sheathing should not be included and considered as demolition. I think you will trigger a lot of issues for homeowners if they, for example, were to go in and remove the siding, which has always been formally and explicitly excluded as demolition and then ending, end up replacing some or, or all of even the sheathing on one side of the house for, you know, because it was rotted or again, because of insulation or other requirements. And then being denied the ability to do a, a twenty-five percent demolition by right under the D-COD because they replaced some sheathing, let's say, in a prior project would be very detrimental and I think very onerous. And as we know, sheathing is not something that's seen, it's underneath the siding, which again, can be replaced already by right, and that's explicit. I personally think that this originated from what I thought was a fairly strict interpretation by KP as they reviewed this. I do believe that the, the latest edit did, did show, you know, exclusion of sheathing under the demolition. And I would support that change that was made. So I, I just wanted to explain where I came, was coming from.
Any other comments? Counselor Igerman?
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment. So I mean, I, I, I'm okay with excluding sheathing. I did discuss this with Counselor Zed and with staff. Although as a sponsor, I didn't originally have it in here. And here's the rationale. So again, turning back the clock, we were trying to prevent where people essentially with impunity demolishing old houses that are on the national register as contributors. And then drilling down, we had always excluded siding because we realized, all right, yeah, well, some may need to replace the siding if it's been up there for too long and it's rotted out. And that's not really what we're trying to protect. We're trying to protect the integrity of the building. The other exception we had was what we had in mind was really the rear wall, but it doesn't have to be. We didn't write, it wasn't adopted that way by the city council seven years ago. Instead, the idea was you can blow out one wall and, and do an addition, you know, so that you can expand these buildings. You don't have to keep it exactly as it exists today. So then when sheathing was brought up, you know, playing it through, I, I do think that Counselor Zed has a good argument that sheathing often has to do with insulation. And it, it's also something that's not seen necessarily by the public. So, you know, what is the, I don't know, the, what is the public policy purpose of protecting the sheathing? And then the distinction I would draw, because I, I want to put all the cards on the table is, you know, and I did with, with Counselor Zed and others, I draw the line at framing. You know, because once you demolish the framing, there's nothing left of the wall at all. It just, you know, there's nothing. It's gone. And, and I do think there is a public policy value to the framing because framing has changed historically over time. A lot of these old buildings, speaking of my own house, you know, has a different type of framing than you would have today. And is, is, is part of the integrity of the house. So I support this new exception for sheathing. I think it's a way forward. But I'd like to hear from others.
Anyone from the planning, Chair Sonton?
Yeah, I initially was not in favor of excluding sheathing, but I've thought about it some more. And for the reasons that have been described already, I think I would exclude it. But I am very much in favor of what Counselor Igerman said about preserving the framing. But I am very much in favor of what councillor Igerman said about preserving the framing. That's very special to a historic structure.
Leah?
I agree with that.
Councillor Wallace?
I would also agree with that. We actually, um, we have a historic house right on Merrimack Street, but years ago, we actually had the sheathing replaced because it was rotted, but we worked with an architect with specialization and, and um, you know, historic renovation. He said, you know, it's the framing, the stairs, the original wood, that's the kind of thing you want to preserve. So, um, I, I agree with it. Thank you.
All right. Didn't expect consensus to be that quick. All right. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this one? Number five? All right. Why don't we move on to number six, modify calculation of demolition area?
Uh, so this is the same section we're looking at, but further down, uh, in the same provision. So uh, and open up for your debate on this issue, but it was trying to clarify uh, the application of the current ordinance so that the layperson even could read this ordinance and know uh, exactly uh, how things would be calculated essentially. But again, if you have policy direction, you want to go one way or the other, we can obviously revise language accordingly.
Sure. Councillor Wallace and then councillor Z.
Sorry, lowered my hand.
All right, councillor Z.
So I, I just um, to speak to this one as well, uh, my concern here is that I, I, I think councillor Igerman just said it in the last discussion, well, the, sort of the core tenet of the D-COD is that when you, when you do a project, you, you basically, you get one wall uh, for, to, to boil it down to something a little bit more simple. And my concern with this is that uh, by including uh, windows into that calculation where they previously were not included, you, you sort of are uh, taking on that core tenet of the D-COD, which is that really your twenty-five percent isn't twenty-five percent. It isn't one wall. If you, in the course of your project, want to make some adjustments to some other windows, such as, you know, taking a, a single window and making it a double or some things like that. And I think that in my observation of, of large, you know, large scale renovations that you see, um, typically, uh, there's going to be some consideration for changing the, the window fenestrations to allow for a larger window or change a window size. I don't want anybody to misconstrue and, and think that I'm advocating for something where you basically could change every window fenestration and make everything uh, bigger or change every single window in the house. But I'm just, you know, it, to keep it again, very simple, I think one could say, well, you could take the twenty-five percent and make it a little bit more in order to accommodate for the windows, but I could see how that could be abused. And that too would be attacking the core tenet of the D-COD. The other thing could be to, to not include windows, which my understanding is how it is done today. And I can certainly see how that can be, uh, can be met with some abuses too. So I'm trying to find to thread frankly, a difficult needle, which if we're being honest, the entire D-COD is trying to thread a difficult balance between differing, differing um, uh, interests, both of the homeowner, property owner, as well as the public and the preservation aspect and so forth. That's just my main concern is that, you know, if you do a large scale project and you end up adjusting two or three windows, your, your twenty-five percent may be twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, and when you're right at the edge of, of, uh, and I think a lot of these projects are, they need every bit of that twenty-five in order to make an addition work or something like that. I just worry that we are going to create unintended consequences or create additional variances or D-COD spec- uh, permits requested. And the challenge with that is that what argument does the homeowner come in and make? Uh, because the standard under D-COD is you really have to show that essentially there's, there's a, a, a lack of, uh, in order to justify the demolition, you have to show a lack of sort of uh, um, economic value to the property. So it becomes a weird conundrum. I think an odd argument for a homeowner to make, I think an odd argument for a zoning board to have to listen to and try and parse through. Um, so I'm trying, uh, you know, this one, I know what my issue with it, it is, but I don't quite have a solution to it. And that's what I'm hoping that, uh, you know, the, the, the minds here can help put that together.
So councillor Igerman and then Rick Tainer?
Yeah, and this one, I, councillor Z and I could not reach agreement. Um, I, because I, again, going back, I, I don't think it actually goes against the core of the D-COD, because again, the, where we use the word wall. But what we, if you want to be an architectural persnickety person about it, what we meant was facade. So in other words, when you look at an old building, you perceive it as a, you know, one wall at a time. And that wall is, is a system. It's a system of voids and solids, including fenestration, meaning doors and windows. And, and I actually don't think, uh, we have to hear from Jennifer, but I don't think we've uniformly excluded uh, windows from the calculation. I think sometimes applicants have tried to do that so that they could demolish more than one wall. So what they do is they come in and they say, well, I'm, you know, you can't count the windows because that's a void. There's no wall there. Therefore, I can take the area of those voids and demolish them around the corner on another wall. So I think actually this is a loophole that we need to, you know, make, make clear is closed. And um, it doesn't preclude you from changing windows, but it still caps you at twenty-five percent. Because again, what we're trying to get at is facade by facade. If you want to blow out a hundred percent of one facade of a square building, you can, under this ordinance, lock, stock and barrel, windows, doors, walls, framing. Unfortunately, it's gone. So I, I, I think actually what was proposed here is, is the right way to go. That's my two cents on that.
Rick?
Uh, actually, my comments aren't following the, this discussion that's going on. So I'd rather hold off until other people have weighed in on, on this discussion about the twenty-five percent.
Chair Sontag?
So, um, it was my idea to solve this problem with a suggestion, suggestion of a new provision. So we stick with the twenty-five percent is the wall as described, um, very clearly by councillor Igerman. Anything on that wall is part of the twenty-five percent. But if you want to make changes in other character-defining features that have historic relevance, then that's a separate consideration. And you could get, and that, that, that then puts, I think it puts an awful lot of pressure on the zoning board to make some historic comments, comments about the historic nature of those other features. Um, and then we get into the need for a uh, historical commission review. So it gets, as I'm thinking, and I'm just thinking this out right now, it gets really complicated. So I suppose it's just easier to leave, leave the language as it's been changed um, here to include windows as part of the twenty-five percent. So I just talk myself out of it. I'm with councillor Igerman.
Could, could I speak to that quickly?
Certainly.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, I think uh, Chair Sontag went the right trajectory. Again, we, we made the decision seven years ago, right or wrong, that we weren't going to get into architectural uh, the, the defining features and so on, the way we do in the DOD. We wanted a bright line rule, you know, you, you can blow out twenty-five percent of, of facade and, and all of it. So uh, I, I think she and I came to the same conclusion.
Chair, could I just ask a quick question for clarification? Can Jennifer answer, how has she been doing this? Because if I miss, uh, because I, I don't, maybe I didn't understand it. Have you been including the windows or not in, in say the last two years for these types of applications?
The existing window area can be replaced without it counting? If it is to be enlarged, what we have been counting is the new window area. So the net change.
Got it. And, and, and councillor Igerman, if I may, chair, so if, if this were to pass, do you envision that exactly what Jennifer just said is the way that it would continue? It's the new area that's, you know, that essentially the part of the wall you have to remove to make the window bigger gets counted? Is that your under, your interpretation of the proposal?
Well, there's two different things going on, because remember, early, earlier on in this paragraph, we talk about near replacement of existing windows. Because then unlike in the DOD, the DOD, we do regulate windows independently and that's a whole other kettle of fish. We do not regulate them in the D-COD. So you, you can always change your windows. What we're, when we talk about fenestration and I defer to the architects, I guess Leah, Leah especially, it's the the pattern of void and solid. So that's what I'm getting at. You, there's nothing under the D-COD that stops you from replacing your windows. Nothing.
So, so in other words, yes, you would envision what's written here to match up with what Jennifer just stated she's been doing.
Yeah, if you want it, but my not just, well, with one addendum. Also, if you took the same area of window and you filled it in and then you cut a new hole to match it, that's also demolition. I, I don't know how she deals with that now.
That, that was our uh, understanding and our intent.
Right. So if you're moving things around, that, that you're demolishing the fenestrations, when you're changing the facade. If you're taking out the sashes and putting in new ones, or you're changing a window from double hung sash to a crankout, you're exempt.
That's, the, the one point that KP suggested we clarify is that if we do wish to continue counting the infill of the existing window opening as demolition, that we should explicitly state that.
That, that makes sense.
All right. Thank you for letting me jump. I just wanted to get clarification. Thank you.
Sure thing. Um, I would like to be respectful of the planning board's remaining items on their agenda tonight. So if we could get through the next two and then have public comment and try to wrap this up before nine o'clock so they can get to the rest of their business. I think that would be a fair compromise. So can we go on to uh, number seven, planning board and ZBA review for operable windows?
Excuse me, um, I think Rick Tainer had a comment. Did you want to go forward on something relating to what we were talking about?
I think it's uh, minor enough that I can deal with it offline.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for calling me on that one, Chair Sontag?
No worries.
All right. So number seven, uh, we've moved to it. Jennifer, do you want to speak to this one before we get into it?
I, I suppose I could. This specifically deals with uh, the fact that despite um, the, the change that was proposed originally in the ordinance was to allow for an operable window, but it did not address the fact that in order for an operable window to be put in, you would first have to determine that that existing historic window was poor under the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines. And so it still required uh, a variance and a DOD special permit. And I think that there's some uh, in desire to investigate whether that could be done by other means to not have to make someone go through sort of double, double permit for the same item.
All right. Any comments on this one?
I, I think we've solved the problem that she just uh, mentioned by putting operable windows in the part of the ordinance that over, is overseen by the planning board. Because then we would be looking at everything under our purview and it wouldn't be bounced back and forth um, with the ZBA who would not be cognizant of the um, quality of the window issue. So I, I think this fixes that by just putting in operable windows in the DOD, unless I've been missing something here.
Uh, this is Andy. Yeah, so uh, Chair Sontag, we do agree, I think, with that. Um, the nuance we were trying to point out is just so that everybody's on the same page and there's not any misunderstandings later on about what the councils, uh, you know, discussing uh, a change for or adopting as a change. The language here, as you point out, Chair, does allow the planning board, would allow the planning board to allow a change in the mode of operation, in the case of Brian or Fouls, um, the operability of that window. But what it would dislanguage here, um, and we were not trying to address the other aspect of it here and then the cleanup language, but it certainly could be added in there or changed, is the current ordinance, in order to get to that ability to apply to the planning board for an operable window in this section, one first has to go to earlier in the DOD section to um, verify and prove to the, the board that the window cannot be salvaged. If it's historic, then it cannot be salvaged or restored first. So uh, the, the, the only point we're trying to make here is that if you want to allow um, operable windows, irrespective of whether or not they're historic, you would have to clarify that in here. We were just trying to clarify that operable windows are allowable by the board. Um, you, you would have to address separately, would have to address separately additional language in here to address the fact that um, someone would first need to demonstrate that those windows um, could not be salvaged or repaired first. So that's all.
But I don't read, I don't read it that way. I, I assume that if we have a, an application for operable windows, that we would be looking at the quality of the windows that are already there as part of our review. That it's not one thing and then they're not linked necessarily. For example, if they want to replace uh, static windows with operable windows and the static windows are perfectly fine, but there is a very good argument for operable windows, then we should have the right to say that that's possible. And that's where I get into the issue of how much flexibility is the permit granting authority being allowed here? And I'm afraid I'm opening up another can of worms, but as it's written right now, I guess I need an interpretation. We cannot?
Well, yeah, I think the, I would argue, and I'll leave it to councillor Igerman who wrote the ordinance, original ordinance, but I, I think the board's hands might be tied a bit by not, you would not be able to, uh, if the windows are, are demonstrably historically, you know, uh, relevant and could be restored or repaired. You could then, I don't think it would be inconsistent with the ordinance, I think, for the board to reach a conclusion that you could allow the operable window here because you couldn't first pass that first threshold of uh, whether or not it was poor.
Could, could I suggest a solution?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so notice that the phrasing we, we used seven years ago was mode of operation, because we actually we didn't have in mind, if you went back to the videotape, we weren't talking about whether they opened or not. It was more, is it a window that goes up and down? Is it a window that cranks out? That's what we had in mind. But now we've all learned, all of us, we need to deal with uh, opening of windows. Um, so my suggestion is you do two things to this to bring it to the council. I, I, I agree, you know, we've learned it's, it's too onerous to send them both to the zoning board and to the, the uh, special permit granting authority. Why don't you just say, uh, proposed replacement of, of windows may include making them operable or opening uh, without regard to their condition under, you know, twenty-seven FE or whatever it is, provided however, such mode shall be approved by the SPGA. Then you're covered. You know, you're talking about opening and you know that it doesn't matter what condition you're in.
I, I think councillor, that would address the, the nuance we were pointing out. That either way, it's up to you as policy, but that would certainly address the issue.
Thank you councillor Igerman. Uh, Rick?
Yeah, so I, I understand that change. Um, I guess my concern would be that when you look at the previous sentence, does this mean the, the planning board could authorize a static, currently static window to be opened? But we have to match that openly, openable window, we have to match the historic window in its uh, dimensions, configuration, and other general characteristics. And what I'm thinking about is if, you know, just to look at the obvious case, if you've got a, a plate glass storefront, um, does that mean you can't put in a uh, you know, an old choppy window with lots of small panes? That would open, that there would, the, the operable window would have to be essentially plate glass with no framing?
Well, yes, that's, I mean, and that's the proposal from Brian is they, they they want it, they've said they want to make it look the way it does, it's just going to open. That's what I understood.
That's not what I thought, I thought it was, I thought they had panes in their windows, but.
Yeah, but yeah, let's not get into the detail on that.
No, but that's, that's the question.
It is a good guidance, guideline to know that it needs to look, it needs to be comparable in look and feel.
It needs to look like a nineteen forties or whatever plate glass storefront.
Yeah, but well, again, we also, we did envision this uh, years ago. Materials don't need to be duplicated exactly. It, it's basically what we tried to do with um, Vera Restorante, but we couldn't get there, because they couldn't, they couldn't, they didn't want to uh, adopt the proposed design, as I recall.
But I guess, I guess my, my concern is that an operable window, because you're, you typically are breaking it into smaller pieces. Each piece needs to have a frame to hold it together. And so that as a result, it's, it's not really going to look very similar to the original, I don't think, in most cases. So um, so I just want to make sure that this is what we mean, that we're saying that the, because I'm not, I'm not sure it will work, I guess. That's my, my concern.
But the idea is to give you the chance to make it work, because right now you, 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 you don't without a variance. You can't even try. We want it, the idea was to create an opportunity for people to make it work, if they can make it work.
And if I, could I jump in one more time? Keep using the Brian Fowles example because it's most recent. It's also the most unusual. Most of the windows in the, I believe, in the DOD area are, are divided lights and give more options for if they were to be openable, that the framing could simulate what looks like what's there. So while this may be a unique situation, I think the language as proposed in the change should be okay. And I'd like to hear from any other planning board members because we've thought about this a lot. If you think other language should be incorporated here, especially on the lines that Rick was just talk, talking about.
This is Don. Just one comment. I'm okay with the proposed wording. The only thing I would say to all the planning board members, we just better be darn sure we're very consistent and specific when we approve something because otherwise we'll be opening up the city to a bunch of appeals, my opinion, litigation. But having said that, I'm completely for the proposed wording.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Counselor Agarwal, you still have your hand up.
Sorry. I'll take it down.
Any other planning board members or counselors you want to speak? All right.
Well, I'll just say one thing. I, I do think we have to be really careful about. We've, we've, we've been very consistent about if the window can be restored, then it should be. And that's been our primary concern. Operability has been a secondary issue for what that's worth.
Thank you, Leah.
So just to confirm, there is an amendment to this right now that will reference the condition of the windows. Is that correct, Andy? Is that what you took as a note?
That's our understanding. Yeah.
Okay, good. All right.
All right. There's no other discussion on this one. Why don't we go to the last one and see if we can wrap this up before nine? So this one goes to the Decod DOD. Any waivers by special permit versus variance?
Yeah. And I, I believe, I don't know if Bonnie wants to speak to this, but the question here, I think, was early to an early point she had made was are there any other places in which it might make sense for either the planning board for the DOD or the ZBA for the Decod to have the ability to grant a waiver or reduction of, of any of the standards or provisions? Again, this is, you know, this is not, it, it does happen in ordinances. Whether or not it makes any sense for the board that's doing the permitting to have any flexibility, for instance, we ran into this situation here with the operable windows where you know, the, the current language doesn't allow it. And the only way to go do that is to get a variance. Language could be added for the section or some sections of this DOD or Decod ordinance or other sections of the ordinance, allowing the board as a special permit granting authority to waiver reduce something that might be considered appropriate. I don't know where those things might be in the ordinance and what, what provisions you might want to see those in. But that was the, the question was, do you want to allow any latitude for the board to approve or allow things that would otherwise require a variance?
Yeah, I, I suggested some statement at the discretion of this special permit granting authority, some general statement at the end. But I don't know if legally that is a wise thing to do. And I would ask that the lawyers on this discussion chime in on that if, if we're opening up something that would be legally untenable.
I'm not the attorney, but this is Andy. I don't see any issues with it legally. To me, it's more just a policy question. I don't know if I could off the top of my head, think of any clear spot that would make sense here to allow that, other than obviously the operable piece, which we're addressing already. I, I can't think off the top of my head of any point where that would, we'd want to see that immediately anyway. I don't know if Jennifer has anything or anyone else has anything to offer for that.
Just to clarify, I was thinking of this as a somewhat catchall flexibility statement so that we don't run into problems where we can't hear something or we can't allow it. I think we have it in, well, it's not exactly a special permit, site plan review. You know, or some of the, I've looked for the language where it doesn't, where our decision does not or when, where the decision would make the make it more in keeping with the intent of the ordinance.
I'm a little, this is Jennifer. I'm a little reticent to, to suggest you go down that path because I, I quite honestly, I'm not sure I would know how to write the determinations. If, you know, I, I might, if, if someone's giving me a proposal that doesn't meet a standard, my determination right now would be that it needs a variance. If you have the ability to write a waiver, do I just send everybody to the planning board to see if you'll give them a waiver? And, and that's my reluctance with it.
Yeah, that's what I meant by sort of the legal perspective on it, but it's more procedural. Maybe I'm, I'm looking for trouble. I just was trying to give our, give us some more and the Z, well, ZBA doesn't really have flexibility. It either is or it isn't. But for us, on our very special permits and in the DOD in particular, I was hoping it would give us some flexibility, but we probably don't want it, is what you're saying.
I think it opens up more, more than it solves.
Counselor Agarwal?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, if you put in a catchall, then, then basically you don't need any of the rest of the guidelines. You could just, it becomes, you know, I was just going to skip to the catchall and say, well, all these guidelines you have about windows or it's all mean, all the diagrams, pages and pages, you can all just wave your hand and get rid of all of it. I, I don't think that's a good idea. I think we've, we've put in flexibility and the only place where it's really bitten us is operable windows. And, and I think we just solved that one.
Okay. All right. I mean, that just raised this whole issue for me and I thought that it might be helpful, but I'm not going to push it. It's fine. Let's drop it.
All right. So we did get through the eight issues of, I would like to open it up to public comment if you're okay with that, Chair Sontag?
Yeah, sure.
Is there any attendees that would like to speak? I see one hand.
Glenn Richards, if you'd like to address the boards.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Glenn Richards, Sixth Kent Street in Newport, also with the Historical Commission, but speaking for myself tonight, but informed by that position. So obviously on these, I focused on the ones related to like the DOD and Decod and some of those changes. So in very, very briefly, I won't go over some stuff that I submitted in writing to Chair Sontag and so on. Just wanted to say a couple of real quick things. The sheeting removal, I don't see any real problem with that. I don't think the historical commission would have a problem with that. On the, the calculation of the demolition area and the windows, that one, I, I fall, I would agree with Counselor Argument on that because from what I've seen and things that have come before the commission, it's good to have a review of, of those larger remodelings. You know, and a review does not necessarily mean a denial. So remember, you know, just because it's being reviewed doesn't mean they're not going to be able to do it. But I think it's very, it's a good idea to have those major alterations be able to be reviewed. On the operable window thing, I think it's, it is a good idea to simplify the process. I think the move to get rid, to fix that problem of, you know, throwing it over to the ZBA and stuff. I think that's an improvement. However, the same, same comment applies. And I think Chair Sontag mentioned it, that the, the, the Brian case was kind of an outlier. There was a similar case on Liberty Street where they wanted to make a window operable and it literally would look almost exactly the same. So, so there are cases like that, that this would certainly simplify. And, but I, I don't really, really have a big problem with the, the whole business about removing the restriction about condition on this, as long as those, you know, things do get a, a, a good review so that you can see that what they want to do is not going to defeat the whole purpose of the DOD ordinance altogether. And I think that's all I wanted to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Glenn. All right. We can close it to public comment. I don't see any other hands up.
No hands, no.
All right. Chair Sontag, do we want to set a date for this to be continued to?
I believe so, given Andy's next steps. He was going to propose pull together all of the comments in a final edited version that we should have a last go at.
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay. Looking ahead, our next meeting is two weeks away from today, which doesn't give him a whole lot of time to pull all that together. But it's up to you, Andy, if you think you could do that by 7:21?
Yeah, I, I would like to get this out to you early next week. And that way you have time to review it and decide what you want to do on the 21st, if you want to take that, that night, that first, that night.
And we don't have any issues on, on, what do you call it? Notification or anything? We're still continuing?
Correct. Still continuation of the same hearing. Yeah.
Hey, let's do it. Are you, is that convenient for City Council and Planning Development in particular?
I defer to Counselor Agarwal and Counselor Wallace.
It's okay by me.
Yeah, that works for me. Okay.
Oh, great. We might just wrap it up.
All right. So July 21st, seven o'clock.
All right. So I make a move to continue to July Committee Meeting jointly with the planning board to the 21st at seven o'clock.
Chair second?
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call.
No.
Counselor Agarwal?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan, yes.
All right. I'd like to have the same motion from the planning board, please.
So moved.
Who's that?
Don.
Don, thank you. Second?
Second, Rick.
Okay. I'll call roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So we will see you on the 21st.
Thank you.
Close out your meeting and we'll carry on.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Go call. Counselor Agarwal?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan, yes. All right. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. Sorry, it went so long.
Thank you.
Oh, but it was productive. Thank you for managing it so well. Thank you all, counselors.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to continue on with the planning board meeting. Let me go through our agenda. And apologies to everybody who has been waiting very patiently or impatiently in the wings to start so late. We're going to begin with a public hearing on 19 to 23 Pleasant Street, Unit One, for a DOD special permit. Our other in business includes a request for a minor modification at Seven Moren Road, an approval not required at 34 and 34 R Spofford Street, and a minor site plan review for 86, 88 Prospect Street. There's some correspondence to this, to hear about for a notice of a Chapter 91 license application, three minute, meeting minute approvals and any other updates. So we'll go right into the public hearing on 19 to 23 Pleasant Street, Unit One, the DOD special permit. And I'll call on Andy to let in to speak, whomever is presenting this.
Sure. So I think we have here tonight Matt Ward and Joshua Van Dyke. I do not see Stan Kubinsky in the audience, but I do see James Trig. I'm not sure if they want to address the board. We have your presentation slides and plans and so forth to display. James or Matt, if you're unmuted?
I, I can take this. Jim and I are here acting as the construction managers for the new kitchen renovation at 21 Pleasant Street. We are proposing to relocate the front entry storefront to its original position. I think slide number four shows this most accurately. It is on the far left-hand side of the page. We'd like to relocate that door so that it's directly facing the street. It's currently on the, I believe it is the west. Yep. Oh, yep. Right there. We'd like to relocate that to its original position. So it'll be directly facing the street. This has been approved by the National Historic Committee or the Newburyport Historic Committee. And we'd like to present this to the planning board for approval. We have field measured all conditions and we will match the left side opening window to meet the right side as well. So we'd just like to match the condition. And this is for the flow of entry into the proposed restaurant renovation for new kitchen.
Are there any questions from the planning board members for clarification?
Yeah, just, just to be clear, the, the new door that is going to be put will match the existing door that is there in the center of the building?
We're, we're actually relocating the existing door, so it, it will match exactly.
It'll, okay.
I have no questions. I think it all looks good.
Okay. I'll call for public comment. Is there any public, any member of the public would like to speak to this? Andy, you don't see anybody?
I see any takers, no.
No. Okay. So close public comment. We need to go through the DOD special permit draft findings. And if there are any questions that come up in that process, we can have the applicant speak to that. Before we go through these, I'd like to point out both in the DOD special permit draft findings and in the general special permit findings, the required use as has been defined and opined on by KP Law in previous application is the project itself. So when it says the requested use is the relocation of the restaurant entrance door within the storefront alcove and the replacement of the existing door location in the above, in the alcove and a window, that is the interpretation. So I hope that's not up for discussion at this point. I don't want to take up a lot of time with going through all of these. They're stated here in the staff report. They can be incorporated into the decision as stated. Would anyone like me to read through them anyway? Andy, is there any reason to do that at this point?
No, I would, I would just, if you wanted to keep it efficient, you could just reference the staff report and make it clear that you would be voting, I assume, unless you wanted to modify anything consistent with the draft special permit findings for the DOD and the general special permit findings that we had provided for the board's consideration.
Yeah, that's in the draft, the first draft motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. With the, before we make any other, take a vote, would the applicant like to say anything else? Or anyone on behalf of the applicant?
We'd like to thank you for your time this evening.
Okay. So let me have a motion and please read it as drafted here in the staff report. Who would please make that motion?
Okay to do it, Bonnie. Motion to approve the DOD special permit application submitted for 1923 Pleasant Street, Unit One, with incorporation of the draft findings reviewed tonight, as provided by the Office of Planning Development, comment to the board's decision accordingly.
I'll second that.
And that's Leah?
Yeah.
Oh, no. Leah, okay. Getting good at recognizing voices. Okay. Have a motion in a second. I'm going to take a vote for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you very much. This was very well-designed and presented application, and we appreciate it to allow us to get through it so efficiently. All right. Our next order of business is a request for a minor modification at 7 Morin Road.
And I believe we have Justin Dutcher here. I'm not sure if we have the rest of the team there in the audience. I don't see Chris York or Wendy Welton. I'm not sure if they're necessary for the presentation.
Well, then, let's hear from Justin.
Yes. Hello, thank you. Are you able to hear me okay?
Sure.
Great. So yeah, this is Justin Dutcher, the property owner. I did let the architects and engineer know that they could, they could go ahead and get on with their evening, just given the late hour there. So I'm happy to present this to all of you, and I thank you for your, for your time. Very, very basically, we're looking to add a small four-season room off the, the back of our home into our backyard and where an existing deck is located now, and then build a new deck alongside that new room across the back of our, of our home. And in order to do the new deck, you can see in this site plan, there's some infiltration system that we need to relocate, so that it's not beneath the new deck and the structure can go into the ground there. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And there's, there's also some drawings from the architect, I believe, that you all have as well.
Yeah, could we just pull those up and walk through them? Just show us what's happening?
Sure.
Andy, can you move us along, please?
So you can see here that the, this is the back, looking at the back of our home, from sort of the corner of our property, and the, the room extending into the backyard, that's, that's the new room we're looking to build. And that is basically where the existing deck is, which we'll take down. And then the new deck to the right of it, along the back of what is our garage, you can see with the white railings. This is looking at the side of our home. And that's the existing deck. And this is from the other side of our home.
Right.
So there, we were in the Oldio Woods neighborhood. We've been in Newburyport for about 16 years now, and this is what we consider to be our forever home. And, you know, really just living all together for the past year, I've realized we need a little bit more getaway space on our first floor, which is this sort of open floor plan. So that's what we're, we're looking to create for ourselves here.
And this is Andy, just as a context reminder, the, it actually came up earlier tonight in the zoning hearing, but the, the planning board has had flexibility in the OSRD, Open Space Residential Development District zoning to allow smaller than otherwise applicable lot sizes and dimensional setbacks, up to 50%, you know, reductions and so forth. So in this development, those reductions were included in the original project. However, there were specific plans called out for what was allowed on each of the lots and then the setbacks and so forth. So this would be essentially a modification to that, that one particular lot as originally approved to allow the modification here. I think it's noted in the staff report that the city engineer did look at the, the plan, the calculations, and didn't see any issues here. We defer to the board, of course, on, you know, where you want to handle it, but we didn't see any technical reasons not to approve the, the plan.
Thank you. And then I realized, I think there was a question about the letter we had gathered from our neighbors in the Butters. I don't know if we have actually overlooked any of our Butters, but really we went around to everybody that could see into the back of our property, you know, beyond just those that we think are technically Butters, to get everybody's, you know, input into this. And everyone was happy for us and certainly on board with it. So we have the support of our neighborhood.
Okay, so that was my question, and I just looked at the list. I didn't know why number six, which would be next door to you, on the side where the, I believe where the extra room is, the additional room is going, hadn't been listed on there, and I was wondering if that was an oversight or they really did have some problems.
I don't know which number is six. I apologize.
It's next door to you, isn't it? Oh, oh, it's across the line. Sorry.
Did you mean eight, Bonnie?
Eight's on the list.
Okay.
All right, I must have, I thought there was a, a plan of all the houses with the numbers on them?
Oh, you know what? It might have been, there might have been some confusion, because we're looking at old plans. It might have been the lot numbering that was different at the time or something. I don't.
Oh, that's what it is. I'm sorry. Okay, because you're, Justin, you're speaking so confidently that you've talked to everybody, and I'm thinking, how could you have left out your next-door neighbor?
No, I, I was looking at the definition of a butter, and I guess maybe the, our neighbors across the street from our, from us on the front would maybe be a Butters, but they don't have any, I mean, and we've, we're certainly happy to get their support, but we didn't think they had any sort of dog in this fight, because it isn't something they could even see from their property.
They can't see it. And we regularly talk about things that are visible from a, from a public way to the people who are abutting that way. Okay, no, we're good.
Nobody raised any concerns, and we, we went around and talked to everybody and showed them all these plans and walked through what we were intending to do, and everybody was happy for us, so.
So can I just ask the question, why wouldn't we approve this? Is there any, is there any reason we wouldn't approve this?
Oh, this is Don. I mean, one reason I could see we would not approve it, and I'm not, I'm, I'm for it, but just to set the record straight, I presume if there was, if the lot coverage exceeded dimension requirements, we would not approve it, right?
But apparently all the calculations have been done, and it's, it's okay.
No, well, I think you were asking hypothetical. If not, I apologize, and I was providing hypothetical answer.
Yeah, yep.
I mean, the other question to ask, I thought you were going to ask, is this a minor or a major? Because we have to make that decision as well, modification.
Well, if we can't even come up with a reason not to approve it, I can't imagine it would be major.
Well, it could be major. We could still love it, and it could be major that's, you know, going to affect all the neighbors or something. Let's, we're tired. I think we're making things up. We're trying to stay here. We love each other so much, we want to think of things to talk about. But I'm, that's not to discount your question. Thank you, Leah, and Don, for your response. Anybody else?
Yeah, the only item I would, I would throw out for the board's consideration is, I mean, I understand the city engineer has reviewed it and the drainage, and, you know, we split, when this came up, there's a lot of discussion on drainage. There's a bit more impermeable area. My sense is it probably slopes away from the house into the existing Butters. The only thing I would talk is where they're relocating the drain field is that someone from the city's engineer's office, before they covered back up, just confirmed that what they said they're going to build, they built. Calculations, fine, they're saying, and how do we know they're going to build it that way?
Yeah, so just to clarify, if, if the board wants to, you can incorporate as a amendment to the possible motion that you, you wanted prior to backfill of the system, that the city engineer or, or Assistant City Engineer verified its installation. You know, proper installation, that we could add that to if you'd like. Up to you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just throw it. Otherwise, that's the only thing I could possibly suggest, Bonnie, and the rest of the, my fellow board members.
Okay, so city engineer to verify proper installation of underground infiltration.
And we would understand that to be part of the motion to approve if that's the case.
Yeah, that, that's where I'm writing it in. So we've got a three-barreled motion to deem that the request minor, to approve it, and to include this additional wording. Anything further from anybody before we go for the motion?
Can I make a motion that includes all three of your points as stated?
Sure. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay. And I'll call Roll for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes, you are approved. Justin Dutcher. Thank you. All right. Trying to find all my pieces of paper here. Approval not required, 34 and 34 R Spofford Street. The movement, moving of a lot line. Andy, are you going to just walk us through that real quick?
Yeah, we do have Jim Connolly here, but Jim, if you're tired with you, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. It's okay. Jim's here. He's waited all this long time. Please present.
Me?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, okay, it's, it's actually very straightforward, as you can see. What's happening is, there's a well on, on the property on 34R, and the owner doesn't want the well, but the owner of 34 does. So this little jag was just created to move the well to the ownership of Lot 34. Both lots end up the same size, and obviously there's no setback issues that have changed, except for the setback created by the new lot lines, and those setbacks are much further than required minimum setbacks. So otherwise, nothing changes. It's just to move the well to a different owner. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but.
Any questions, anybody?
No.
No.
As straightforward as presented. Good. Okay, I need someone to make the motion as drafted.
I'll make the motion as drafted.
Okay, second?
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you. I'll call Roll for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Approved as requested. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Minor site plan review for 86, 88 Prospect Street. I'm wondering who is here to present for this?
Yeah. Go ahead. Is that Blake? Go ahead.
No, this is Blake. So Doug with Finneran and Nicholson will be, he will be our DJ for this one. My name is Blake Wilcox, 10 Harrison Street, owner of the property. I also own the Joppa Group on the South End, but Doug will be our, walk us through this one.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Attorney Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson are here this evening representing Blake Wilcox. With, also with us this evening, Stephen Sawyer from Design Consultants, Inc., and Matt Langus from Scott M. Brown Architects. So we do have our engineer, our contractor, and, and our architects with us here this evening. With the board's permission, I'd like to do a quick overview of the project based on the presentation I submitted. And then I will let Mr. Sawyer walk you through the specifics of the proposal, and then lastly, Mr. Langus can provide some comments to you on the architectural plans. And then, again, with board's permission, I would wrap up with a discussion of the site plan review criteria and why we need it. Andy, do you have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation we submitted?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, just to verify, did you send that? Did you, was it posted to the website? Did you send that? When did you forward that to the office?
I sent it earlier today. We made a revision, and I, I resent it earlier today.
Okay, it, give me one moment. It doesn't look like it got provided to us in time, but hang on one second.
I'm sorry.
That's quite right. Just try to avoid these sort of last-minute things that sometimes happen. It wasn't, apparently, when I went to this afternoon to grab the, the files that we use, and they're submitted, it was not there, so. I do not see a presentation posted to the website. Did you send it to Diane and Caitlin, and perhaps not copy of the, or?
Yes. Diane and Caitlin, and I asked if they wanted us to submit it anywhere else, but I, I can proceed based with the plan that's in front of me.
No, that's fine. I think I was able to retrieve it here from the server. Is this it?
That is it. Thank you very much.
Okay, this, as far as folks, this is not on the website yet. Diane was out this afternoon, so I, she can post it tomorrow morning, but this was the slides that I guess that were sent over to Diane and Kate earlier today.
All right. Well, again, this is presentation with respect to 86 and 88 Prospect Street. The project proposes a renovation in addition to an existing five-unit building. It is also proposed to add a new three-car garage to the site. We will be converting some of the impermeable parking areas, or all of the impermeable parking areas to permeable by the use of permeable pavement. We will be creating a driveway access off of Parsons Street to access the new garage. The proposed project, as you know, triggers a minor site plan review with the Planning Board, but it also requires a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. However, the proposed work does not require review by the Newburyport Historical Commission. Our, our existing conditions, the property is and will continue to be a five-unit multifamily residence. The property is a pre-existing non-conforming use within the, the R2 district, as it is a multifamily use. The lot is currently pre-existing non-conforming as to area. We have 11,223 square feet, whereas I'm, I'm seeing a type of 20,000 square feet is required. The front setback right now is at 1.2 feet, and 20 feet is required, and the rear setback is currently at eight and a half feet with a 10-foot requirement. So it is a pre-existing non-conforming situation. The proposed addition in garage will not add any new non-conformities to the site. However, the alterations and the additions will affect an area exceeding 500 square feet. And I'm sure either Steve or Matt will give you the square footage of the addition. The non-conforming rear setback is being extended by the addition, by an addition to the existing structure, so we won't be moving any closer to the rear yard setback, but we will be extending that, that back wall. The project will provide a minimal increase in available parking on the site. We are adding an additional spot going from currently having nine spots to 10, and that will reduce, you know, to a minor extent, the need for on-street parking. The proposed addition will not result in the structure being substantially more detrimental or impactful to the neighborhood. If we could change the side. Thank you very much. In applying to the Planning Board, we did require a waiver from some of your submission requirements. And Madam Chair, if you'd like, I, I'm prepared to go through each of these and provide you a justification for them, although I did submit a written expansion of the waiver request with justifications in the basis for the requirement. But I'm certainly prepared, if you'd like, to go through those, but in the interest of time, I could just answer any questions the board may have with regard to that, those requested waivers.
I think that's the better route to travel. Does anyone have any comments or questions about any of these waivers?
I'll just ask really quickly. So the reason you want a waiver from the lighting requirements, whatnot, is because you're not providing any additional new lighting outside? Is that an example of why you're requesting a waiver?
Well, yes, that's correct. We were, you know, we're not providing any, you know, like parking lot lights or any kind of commercial lighting. However, we did provide as part of our elevation plans, we did show the location of all proposed exterior lights. They are wall-mounted residential-style lighting, and we did provide a, a cut sheet of the proposed lights themselves. So we haven't done a formal lighting plan, but we did provide elevations showing the locations of all the lights and the actual fixtures to be used. They are residential shielded, you know, low-glare lights, so they are, are low-impact lights.
And, and you've provided these to the planning director, and the planning directors basically approved them, or why is it that? Yeah, is that, is that true?
No, I have not reviewed those, no.
Okay.
Yeah, Leah, this is Don.
Yeah, Leah, this is Don, I had a similar comment on the lighting, I guess, I don't, not sure your question was answered, and that is are there incremental lights being added to the structure? Irrespective of what I believe would definitely be incremental lights that are located on the proposed garage. And I was hoping the applicant could answer that question.
Yeah, I do share concern about there being too many lights added.
All right, well, let, when we, let me move on to the, when we do the discussion of the elevation plans, we can provide you, we can point out to you where the lights are being proposed to be placed on the building, and again, we can discuss the the light fixtures that are proposed. If that's okay with the board, I'll let I'll let Steve go through the details of the lighting. But the purpose of the waiver was not to have to do a photometric mapping or lighting plan for the site, given that it was a residential use.
Understood.
I have a question, did you remove the request for a waiver for landscape plan by a registered landscape architect?
No, we did not.
Not on this list?
Not on the list, I apologize, it was on the list, the written list that we provided with the justifications. The answer there with respect to the landscaping plan is that we're not proposing to modify much, if any, of the land, existing landscaping. We are proposing to put a row of arbivites, and it is shown on our site plan. We are proposing a row of arbivites along Parsons Street. But other than that, we're not really proposing any significant changes whatsoever to the landscaping, we're not going to be removing anything of any significance, and we're not proposing to add anything other than the arbivites, and again, we have shown that and the proposed fences on our site plan, which was done by a professional engineer, so we were asking for a waiver of a landscape design plan.
Thank you.
If we go to the next slide, and then I'll so this is just, as you know, an aerial view of the site, you can see that the project is located at the corner of Parsons and Prospect. The house is essentially pushed to the end of the lot that fronts on Prospect, and then the larger open area you see where those two cars are located, that is the proposed location of the new garage. And then I just want to finish up with just a few photographs of the site, so that the board can sort of be familiar with the with the building itself and how it sits in the neighborhood. This first picture on the left is taken from Parsons Street. You'll see the next one, I'm moving to the corner of Parsons and Prospect. Andy, thank you, and this is continuing down Prospect, so you can see the frontage or the building as it faces Prospect, and then the second picture is just a little farther down Prospect, wanted to give you an understanding of the street view. If we could go to the next slide. This picture is just a close-up of the corner, you can see it has kind of a unique infill area there, entranceway, and then the picture on the left is as we start down along start down along Parsons. And then I think the last set of pictures, the first picture is the existing parking area off of Parsons, and that picture is taken of the side of the building from the parking lot itself, and then the last picture is taken from Parsons looking into the existing driveway where the garage is proposed. If you go to the next slide, so if you would, Steve, could you give us a quick overview of the site plan and what's proposed here?
Sure, can you, actually, can, can you hear me out there?
Yeah, sure, Steve.
Great, okay, so actually, this summit surveying, Chuck, Charlie Brennan did the existing conditions plan here, and as you can see, running down Prospect Street, you know, running around the corner, there's an existing curb cut for the small driveway off of Prospect Street. As we work our way around the corner, the sidewalk actually has been fairly recently redone with tactile tactile warning strips at the, at the corner there, at the crosswalk, so the, actually, one thing is the DPW, DPS is signed off saying they don't, they don't need new sidewalks here, they're recently, recently done, recently repaired and refurbished, so as we run down along Parsons, there's a larger curb cut, larger curb cut on Parsons Street for the access to the existing parking today. This, the plot plan here shows the layout of the new garage, new garage, I believe, is about seven hundred ninety square foot footprint. And then also, you can see the addition that kind of fills in the area in the back left corner of the structure itself, and I believe that, that addition's around six hundred seventy square foot footprint. I think Matt from Scott Brown Architects will review the additions, the addition to the house in greater detail. If we could flip to the, flip to the site plan, that would be great, I don't, can we zoom in at all there? This one's a little, there we go, that's helpful. All right, so one thing that Blake is doing here is all of basically, all of the hardened surfaces on-site will be removed, so all the, any concrete and paved surface, pavement surface will be removed. There'll be off of Prospect Street, there'll be an area where you see the car parked, there's a parking spot there, now the pavement, that area will be actually batuminous, it'll be permeable batuminous pavement, which is highly permeable, high, highly permeable, and then there'll be a gate, and then beyond that, there'll be an area of permeable pavers, which is more decorative. That gate, so the, these two parking spaces will be kind of multi-purpose for this unit, it's a tandem, tandem parking spaces, so two spaces for one of the units, it's a five-unit building. So this area could either use for parking, if need be, or could be used as a useful patio space, so it's kind of a multi-use, multi-use purpose there. So as we're working around, working our way around Prospect onto Parsons, well, as far as the sidewalk there and the entry into the building, you'll see, I'm sorry, on Prospect, that'll be all permeable paver up to the, up to the stairway. As we work our way around onto Parsons, you'll see there's a new infill of permeable paver, which is a patio, permeable paper patio area. In between the sidewalk and the patio, there'll be a row of arbivites to give some privacy, along with, I believe that's a low fence, I think that's a three-to-four-foot, three-to-four-foot high fence along Parsons Street. As we work down along Parsons, there's an existing, you can see the curb cut. We are not going to change, we're not changing the curb cut, we're maintaining the curb cut as is, now, there'll be the three-car garage proposed, along with additional space to the left of the garage, so there'd be basically four cars across there, and then enough room for another car parked in front of the, in front of the garage, between the garage and the sidewalk. So basically, we have five, five sets of tandem spots, with a total of ten parking spaces provided, which I believe is one more than is required by zoning for the site. And as we work our way around to the, between the garage and the existing renovated building and the proposed addition, there'll be a landscaped, there's going to be a large landscaped area throughout, you know, around, around the, you know, open space area. Now, Blake's not sure, you know, he's kind of going to finish it out, you know, as we, as we go. I think Jennifer was concerned about what were you going to do out there, whatever we're going to do is going to be permeable, if we added patio, it'd be permeable paver, so it wouldn't increase any impervious area. So what, I guess she was concerned about, okay, she didn't want to see this whole area, see a permeable paver, so I think what, what was agreed to was in that area, the hatched area, it's a little hard to see the hatching on this, it was easier to see on the original PDF file I submitted. But that hatched area, there'd be a maximum of twelve hundred square feet of permeable patio area. In the remainder of it, the main, the remaining area would be either lawn, planting beds, or or landscape area, gardens or gardens, so that, I think there was, I think Jennifer was comfortable with enforcing that as far as the the overall open space landscape area surrounding the building. We are proposing some fences, as you can see, to create some designated open space or outdoor area for each of the units as such. So that, that is that there, now, one thing is what Blake has done here is, we've overcompensated, we've actually provided ripped-up pavement, provided permeable surface for stormwater purposes, so we really, you know, with that alone, we reduced the stormwater. But one thing that, that I noticed on the site was there was a, there's a low area, kind of a lower area in the back upper-left corner, where we have the new addition, so we have the new addition that's additional impervious, and unfortunately, that drainage area, that doesn't drain to either Parsons or Prospect Street. So even though we're, even without the cul-de-sac chambers, we're reducing the stormwater, I said, okay, we got to be careful about what happens in the rear corner of the building. So what I've done there is added a drywell, added drywells for the new, the new roof area of, of the proposed addition, and also, it's going to pick up the back shed or the back, the back eve of the garage, so that'll be handled and infiltrated into the chamber, the soils there, you know, as we know, typically around, you know, in this area, we have excellent well-drained gravels throughout, throughout this area. So by that, we've mitigated any, any potential impact to the abutters, to the, I think it's planned, to plan north and plan northwest on this, on the site, so that was really the only, the only concern regarding stormwater, the remainder of the property all flows off to Prospect and Parsons Street. In discussions with John Eric, he's not concerned with any capacities on Prospect or Parsons, but the, we've reduced, in all, in all accounts, we've reduced the amount of flow to those streets, along with the flow off to the rear of the property. So that, you know, that's an important, an important item regarding stormwater. I think that I think that covers, that summarizes the site work here, really, there's not, there's really not much going on with the site here, a lot of it's going to be maintained, other than improvements with the permeable pavers, and then ripping up, you know, the larger dry, batuminous area off of Parsons, that'll be ripped up, and, I'm sorry, the, all the batuminous on Parsons will be, will be the permeable batuminous, which, which works really well, actually, we've had a good Craig's project, Craig Dacina's over there on, on what Mechanics Court, it's been installed for years now, quite a few years, and I happened to check on it, and it's still performing fabulously over there. So it is a good product, a little difficult to work with, but I think once it's installed, it has a good longevity and good permeability, and aesthetically, it doesn't look too bad, it looks like binder versus a fin, it's a little corso look, but it still looks, it looks good. So I think at this point, I should turn it over, unless you want to handle site questions now, or would you like to move on to the architectural presentation?
While you're here, let's do site questions.
Okay, yeah.
Board members?
Yes, this is Rick, I have a question about the permeable area in the back. And this question about note one, total permeable paper surface within the area, Shenaticse, twelve hundred square feet, all other area within the zone shall be maintained as planting beds, gardens, or lawn. I guess my first question is probably already been, Steve, you probably told me already, but what is the, what is the area of that hatched area?
It's actually pretty, unfortunately, and it's hard to see on this, on this slide.
I can, I know what you're talking about, what I mean is how many square feet are there in that total area from which twelve, only twelve hundred feet would be paved?
Oh, uh, it was actually a few.
What's left over?
Yeah, give me a second, I'll, actually, I'm going to fire up, I'll open up my drawing and just I can list the hatch and tell you, hopefully, it'll open up quickly.
And I guess the second question related to that, while you're doing that is how will that, and maybe this is a question more for Andy, but how will that be documented once the project is done, will somebody from the city go out and or will a, an ASBIL plan be provided to the city showing the twelve hundred feet of pavers and the balance of landscape area?
Yeah, if you want an ASBIL plan, I would recommend to you, maybe to your point, requiring an ASBIL plan at the completion of the project for the zoning administrator to verify, she would typically be looking for, you know, overall compliance with the permits that have been issued when she's giving sign-offs for occupancies and whatnot, but if you wanted an ASBIL to be sure that something is provided by the applicant for expedited and clear review, I would just suggest that be added to the, as a special condition.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, hey, okay, Rick, that, that, that hatched area, the total, that total area is four thousand three hundred and fifty-one square feet, to be precise.
So we're talking about about a quarter of it, about a quarter of it could be pavers?
Little, yeah, a little more than a quarter of it, could, could maximum, maximum be pavers.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Hey, Andy, it's Blake, so yeah, I will, I always do an ASBIL for projects like this for Jennifer, because it makes it easier for confirmation, so yep, I completely agree with that, we would do that anyways.
Yeah, Bonnie, this is Don, I have several questions, and if they're not in the site plan, I'm not sure where these questions would go. First, Steve, would you mind tell us what what were the changes that were made from the original site plan to the revised site plan dated July sixth, i.e., I guess that was yesterday?
Yeah, so I had a discussion with John Eric White, and you can see the drywall that is slid fairly close to the garage. Originally, I had it, it was originally probably up around, if you look at the note, four-inch drain, it was probably slid about halfway between that and the rear property line. And he just asked that I move it as far away from the property line as possible, which I had already had, I think, fifteen or twenty feet, which DEP requires, you know, you're required to keep it ten feet from a property line, which I had, I think I had double what was required. But since we had the room, I didn't have an issue sliding it to the garage, and I'm not worried about a foundation, you know, any infiltration impacting a foundation wall of the garage where it's a slab on grade. So I just slid it, slid it there to appease for that comment. And then the other comment was, I think Jennifer was concerned about just kind of nailing down what's going on with the landscaping in the area in the rear, you know, around, you know, around that open landscape area, and how we're going to handle that. And so that's where, I guess, that's where Blake came up with, okay, the note of the twenty-five hundred, I mean, the twelve hundred maximum square footage of permeable paver, so that, those are the only two changes that were made.
Okay, I did notice in the comments by the city departments that there was a suggestion to replace several trees. If that suggestion has been accepted by the applicant, where, where, where are we going to put those on these plan, or is there a landscape, I don't think there's a landscape plan, right?
No, I could, I could.
Sidewalk, actually, right?
Yeah.
They're not part of this, okay, they're, they're, they're on municipal property, Andy, it's not relevant to this application?
Yeah, so that ordinance provision and the comments that came from the tree commission, those are typically the ones you get from Jamie Tucolo or DPS for sidewalks, and the street trees are for the public right of way, but there are provisions called out in the ordinance for both the ZBA and the planning board to look for. So in this instance, the recommendation from the tree commission was to address, I think it was two, two, replacement of two trees along the streetscape itself, not within the site, to your question.
So, so Andy, just, just my edification, so these comments, that, how is this relevant to this application, that, I'm confused?
The tree comment, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, so just as context for everybody, a reminder, the ordinance was amended a couple of years back to require both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals when reviewing projects, special permits, variances, and site plan approvals to look to the conditions of sidewalks and street trees abutting the property, and if there's any upgrades that are appropriate, to essentially incorporate those by reference in the decisions. And so in this instance, in the typical protocol, has been to obtain that feedback from DPS, Department of Public Services with respect to the site. that feedback from DPS, Department of Public Services with respect to the sidewalks and then with respect to the trees, the tree commission and tree warden over time have provided comments. More recently, the tree commission chair has been the more expedited way of getting that feedback to the board.
So, and again, I'm sorry, but, but whose responsibility is to make them? I understand this is what this ordinance says, is that the applicant's responsibility replace the trees and also redo the sidewalks, make them ADA compliant as, as the other comment about the city department or, or, or is that?
Yeah.
Some of the third party's responsibility?
Yeah. So it becomes the, it depends on the scale of the project, but generally speaking, it becomes the applicant's responsibility to do the upgrades that are expected or required. And it's, there's two triggers. One is if you're creating a new residential unit. The other one is if the cost of your project is exceeds 50% of the assessed value of the, the property, if you will. Generally speaking, in this instance, the sidewalk, I think was mentioned earlier, the sidewalk was relatively recently replaced. So there wasn't an expectation on, you know, the prospect street section that there'd be any new sidewalk added. There was a discussion, of course, about the ramp, and I think that's been resolved now about not removing the ramp that's there crossing Prospect. And the, and then the, the comment there from the tree commission chair about replacing two of the trees.
Hey, yeah, Andy, well, we have no problem with, you know, I guess as coordinated with the, with the tree or with DPS or the tree warden, replacing those two street trees as part of the project. I think it's, but you know, Blake, you know, he, I'm sure he wants, he wants decent trees in front of his project also. So he's, you know, he'll agree to do that.
Yeah. So and Don, that's just, it's just a city council expectation that the planning board and ZBA, when we're doing projects, will incorporate whatever upgrades are appropriate or improvements are appropriate, recognizing that, you know, the policy, I guess, was that, you know, if substantial redevelopment or improvements are being made, it's not unreasonable, especially given that construction might be crossing the sidewalks to make sure the sidewalks are in decent condition and that the street trees are, are in good condition as well, or that if there's additional ones that are needed, that those be planted. And that's why the board has seen and will continue to see recommendations from the tree commission and/or Department of Public Services.
Hey, I know we talked about lighting, so I'll defer that to later. Perhaps some of the other planning board members to address the only other two comments I have. And again, perhaps I'll defer to, to some others. When I take a look at this perimeter around the building, it seems a bit hard in the sense there's a lot of pavers, et cetera. And I would have thought that someone would have wanted to soften up a bit, but again, if no one else thinks that way, that's fine by me. And then the last comment I have is, if you all noticed, there was a dumpster there. And you know, generally when we're doing site plans, we show where the dumpster is. And I saw one of the photographs, if, if in fact this is a private collection, where would the dumpster be? You know, before I thought that was visible from the street. So again, if, if the other, if I other felt, you know, playing board members are okay with all this, or, you know, I'm surely not going to hold, hold this up for, for those, those comments. And Steve, thank you for submitting this stormwater permit more appropriately. And importantly, in my opinion, for stamping it as, as a registered professional engineer state of Massachusetts. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
I've got nothing else, Bonnie.
Don, I, I think you raised a really nice point about it being a really hard edge all around the corner. I, I would like to ask if there's any room for more, for more vegetation or something soft. I mean, there's the arborvitie, but yeah, could there not be more on Prospect Street?
That's a good, it's a very fair point. So right now, just again, so this is Blake. Sorry. So looking at on the Prospect Street side, just to kind of go back to that, if you see the stairs right there. So there's, there's like those long sort of rectangles right there in front of the building. Those are existing stairs and in front of those stairs right now is existing brick. We are the only brick we're really adding to the Prospect Street side is just that, that stretch going to the parking area. So certainly we did keep a very large, kind of what we're calling kind of soft barrier there between the house and the brick, which is that, that kind of like that large or white rectangle right there, just south of the car in the plan view. That is all going to be soft scape, but certainly can bring that, that soft scape further closer to the sidewalk. My intent there was only so that if the people do want to park their car there and then walk into the house, they don't, you know, that they can not walk on the sidewalk and just simply walk across a walkway on the property, but we can certainly pull that, that soft scape right to the sidewalk to, again, to soften that up a little bit, if, if desired by, by the board. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Leah on that. To extend it, I mean, you could put a path through there if you want to make sure that they have a place to walk on the property from their car, but it would soften it up nicely.
Yeah, I agree. Up to you how you do it, Blake, but somehow.
Yep. So Steve, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely concede to that. I have no problem with that at all.
Any other board comments on the site plan before we move on?
Actually, I had a question about the site plan. And this has to do with the corner, the piece of the building, it's the one story corner of Parsons and Prospect. And, and the, I think the original site plan we saw actually call out some infill there. But this plan doesn't actually show that. So I think, I mean, right now there's a roof that extends out to the corner and then there's an inset doorway. And I'm unclear as to what the intent is. Is, is the intent to fill in that corner? So that it is a, so it fills in under the roof, the overhang roof? And if so, why doesn't it show on the site plan? I guess that's, that's my kind of basic question.
Actually, I think Blake, maybe you can confirm that. I believe the sidewalk now is the, the side, city sidewalk kind of extends beyond the property line, the one, you know, in that setback up to the corner. Is that correct?
No, so, so under that overhang right there at the intersection of Parsons and Prospect, where we have sort of the, what we're calling the old storefront entry. Yeah, good, good catch. By the way, yes, there is an overhang there. And on the site plan, it's yet right there. On the site plan, I believe it shows it being in filled. However, on the architectural drawings, we are not, I think this was a bit of a, I don't know if it was a miscommunication or maybe a misidentification. As part of this current proposal, we are not modifying that, that entry alcove right there.
Well, so you're not. Is that, is that the case?
Correct. For now, we are not filling it in.
So does that mean you don't need the variance for the front setback? That the, are you special permit for non conformities for extending an existing front setback?
Not for the front. No, for the rear. Yes.
Okay. Because I know that was one of the questions I had earlier is where, where was the front? Cause it's reported on our, on the information that we have, the requirement for a front, front setback special permit. So you're keeping that's that existing storefront. I mean, not, not necessarily storefront, but the inset, the way you have it there.
That is correct. Yep. As part of the application, yes, we are keeping this storefront.
Thank you for that clarification. That helps a lot. I had, I had previously raised the issue of the, um, the, the tip down, the, the handicap ramp at the corner. And I was, I really didn't see a reason for it to be removed. And I'm glad that DPS has come around on that because I think that's the important thing to keep there. And I, I guess the other question I had is on the back to the front, where we were talking about before with the, we were talking about the hard edge and try to keep some soft, some soft scape there next to that parking space. I'm confused about on the, on the site plan. What is that white, white rectangle that you referred to next to the foot, next to the stairs?
That's a good question. So that, that's going to be like a, a garden bed, you know, some, some sort of garden, not, not these bushes, but it'll be like, you know, like no, you know, low water plants, you know, something that's, you know, low maintenance greenscape, you know.
It would help to show that on the plan because I thought it was a building. I thought it was structured. I don't think.
You know, I, I wonder if perhaps it's, it's color coded. Hang on, I have the original document here.
Yeah, I think Rick just pointed out that the plan just doesn't label that area clearly. So it looks like it's not clear. That's all.
Yep. And I think that's why. Thought it was very hard scape because it looks like a structure, but it's really a continuation of the same thing you have pretty much with the, with the shrubbery, right?
Correct. Yeah. So you're talking just below, just to the left of that car with the car.
Right to the other car, right?
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, that's all. Yeah, that's all planting.
Yeah. So I think it would be.
Yeah, we can lay, yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, label that.
So it's not, it's not really as hard as it looks. There's a, there's a, there's a, some bricks in front of it, but it's basically a similar condition to what you have today.
Understood, Rick, but they've also said they would add to that.
Yep.
Yeah, we're going to extend that out to the sidewalk itself.
Or do something like that to make that space larger, whatever.
Yep.
Not a problem.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else on the, with questions on the site plan before we move on? All right. Next up on your presentation.
And I don't know, Matt, if you're presenting the architectures, I, I do have your architectures. It might be a little better, more legible for the board than the presentation slides, which seem to be a down sampling. If that's all right?
Sure. That works.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Matt Landis, Copron Architects, 38 Madison Street. It's pretty massive to the record. My presentation is fairly short, so just want to quickly touch on what we're doing with the existing and proposed. We're proposing, basically what we're doing is stripping the exterior of the tired materials and adding in addition that complements the existing and eventually, you know, restoring the aesthetic by using better quality products. So what we're planning on doing is keeping the style of the six over six windows. So we're maintaining pieces of the original character, but what we're going to do is replace them with aluminum clad windows. We're also replacing the existing siding with a pre-primed Hardy plank clapboard. We're also using architectural asphalt shingles and introducing charcoal gray standing seam metal roofs at the new entry locations. The existing first floor additions are highlighted by a little bit of a subtle change in siding and color, where you're going with a pre-finished shingle there with a five and a half inch exposure instead of the clapboard. The addition in the rear, which is just over 620 square foot footprint, designed to complement your, the original structures. What we're doing there is extending the hip roof, maintaining the six over six style windows and then preserving some of that aesthetic look of the clapboard siding by, by wrapping that around. And the hip roof, the window style and the siding are all pretty consistent with matching the, the aesthetic character of surrounding neighborhoods. So there's examples of this pretty much up and down Prospect and Parsons as well. So in addition to this, we're also doing a new three car garage, just about 22 by 36 off of Parsons Street. But the materials in the garage, the windows, the siding colors, the PVC trim, that's all consistent with the changes and renovations that we're doing at the main building as well. And then finally, the, the proposed lighting, I know was mentioned before, but it's all downward directed wall mounted fixtures and they're located near the entries and walkways of each unit. So I think they're sort of added sensitively. That really concludes my portion of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but if there are none, I turn it back over to Doug.
I had a question about the garage. You said the materials are compatible specifically. Are they the Hardy board and what you're putting on the house?
Exactly correct.
Yeah. And the stringling on the roof, same?
Correct.
And that's what I'm looking at here. So we're seeing the windows with the divided lights mimicking the house.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just to repeat, I think, what my discussion with Steve, the, the proposed front elevation and left elevation are no longer what we're proposing. Is that correct? The one, the one that we have in our, on our, it's posted on the website. It's the, the plans that you're showing there eliminate that doorway and seem to fill in the corner, right? And those are, that's no longer happening?
So this is a little tough to show in this elevation. This is really sort of at an angle. The, the only change we're doing on this left and, and right quote, sort of corner are just replacing that door with a window. The infill is going to stay exactly how it is today. The only thing essentially we're updating is we're replacing the door with a simulated divided light window.
Okay. It, it didn't look that way when I was trying to compare the existing and trim. Take your word for it.
Do you have anything else, Rick?
I guess the other, the only other question I have is more, more general question relates to where we stand in the permanent process. So I'll save that for later.
Yeah, we'll get to that. So, um, is, is there any more of your presentation then?
Yes, Madam Chair, Attorney DuShane. I, I was prepared to go through the minor site plan review criteria and, and to provide the board information as to how we are satisfying that criteria. Although I was provided a copy of a report that Ms. Sullivan provided to the board where she opined on the site plan review criteria. And quite frankly, her determinations are identical to what I'm going to propose to you. And I'm happy to run through those. But again, in the interest of time, I, I'm happy to do that if the board would like me to, or I could answer questions with respect to why we meet that criteria. I'm happy to run through it.
Yeah, let's just do it on exception basis. If anyone has a question about the stated minor site plan review findings under site plan review criteria or development and performance standards, this is your time to speak up. Nothing. Okay. As for the special, so thank you very much. That's very helpful to get us through this at this late hour. Special conditions, we've already mentioned in passing. So I just want to make it official that the ADA ramp is staying as is. So that one drops off. And there is a special permit, there's a special condition number two, which will become the one where it starts, the applicant shall install the replacement street trees. And it's, it should be more specified according to what the actual wording is of the tree commission chair's recommendations prior to the issuance of an occupancy. So that will be written out more specifically. So there's just one special permit and a special condition there. And we talked about it. We know you're going to do it, but we're going to add a second one, which is to require an ASB plan for review before issuance of occupancy permit. So that would be.
Jerry, is there going to be a revision related to the, the Prospect Street landscaping? Or is that? The question that Leah had talked about was.
Yeah. So we could say, we could put that in the, the site plan, a review, a vision of the site plan to reflect landscaping on, on the, whatever end of that is of.
Prospect side by the driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. This is Andy. If I could, I think it's partly a question of if you're continuing to look for another plan or just conditioning tonight, that that be the change on the plan, by the way.
Yeah, revise site plan to reflect landscaping. Yeah.
Okay. I think we come to my question, which is, can we approve this, this tonight? Or do we have to wait for the zoning board to act?
Yeah, I think it's usual, our usual procedure on this is to say we don't have any problems with it, but leave it open until the zoning board has made its decision. They won't be meeting until July 27th. So it would have to be after that. And then we could have a quick review and approve it pretty straightforwardly if everything goes as predicted with the zoning board. But I don't think it's wise for us to approve this before we get the zoning board decision. Does anyone have any other opinion on that?
Madam Chair, the, the applicant is certainly comfortable in, with that, and we appreciate the opportunity to go through the zoning board process, just in case they have some changes. So it would also give us time to get you the revisions to the landscaping before we meet again.
Okay, but we could take two other votes. One is the motion to grant the requested waiver. One is the motion to grant the requested waivers and the second is to. Determine that the application is complete. Yeah, it's kind of a little bit out of order here, but I think we should get those two votes on the record and then talk about what date we should continue this to, okay?
Very good.
And I, can I make a motion so moved for those two, or do I have to make them separately?
Separately.
Okay.
Well, Andy, can we just do them together? Do you mind?
You can do one motion is fine.
Yeah, okay, we'll take the motion for requested waivers and vote completeness in one motion. Can I have a second? That was Leah, by the way. And second is.
Rick.
Rick, okay. So I'll call the roll for approval, Alden.
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Where am I? Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So those are done.
You want a motion to continue to August 4th, Bonnie?
Well, that's a good question. This gets into a discussion we need to have as a group after we finish with the applications. August 4th is Yankee homecoming week. We usually take that week off, we are meeting remotely. But we might want to decide to meet in person. So. I was going to suggest. That we not meet on the 4th and that we. Consider meeting in person, but not meet again until the. Eighteenth. Does anyone have a problem with that, especially the applicants? That kind of puts you late in the season. Would, would two weeks earlier make a big difference in your plans if we met on the 4th to approve this?
And, and I will not be there on the 18th.
Yeah, well, we don't have some people on the 4th either, but we'll, we'll certainly have. Oh, we'll need this group. Oh no, anybody could watch, could listen to the recording, so that would be all right. So I don't think we'll have a quorum issue. It's just whether or not the applicant would feel really pressed. If he had to wait until the 18th for a final decision on this. Could I hear from Blake, please?
Are you, are you asking me if I'm going to drag you guys into a special meeting just for me? The answer is no. We will wait until it's convenient.
We don't have any other applications for that night, and we've been working overtime, not just tonight, but for many, many months. Yeah, we'd really appreciate it if you could wait till the 18th.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wait. I get it, everyone has been working way, way too hard to last 16 and a half months, so.
Yeah.
Yes, we can wait.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, I'll take a motion to continue. This application to.
Well, you say please.
Yeah.
So moved, Don.
Thank you.
Check out.
Is that? Do I get a second from anybody?
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you. All right, let me call a roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, great. We will see you back here on the 18th for what should hopefully be a very short. Thank you so much. To everybody on the applicant's team, especially for hanging around so late to be with us.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the board's time. Good night.
Okay, Andy, how fast can you tell us about the notice of 91 license application?
Very quick, not much to really bother about that. You're welcome to look through the materials. They're basically moving sand out of the channel, typical dredging project and putting on the beach to try to prevent some erosion and so forth. Any questions or concerns, let me know, but it's pretty typical issues on near the Jettie Ampel Island and. You know, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, approval of the minutes, we have minutes, I believe the 5:24 was going into executive session. And then the other two are full meeting minutes, have I got that correct? Yeah. If there are any comments on any of those, I'd like to take them now. Otherwise, I'm going to ask for approval of all three minutes in one motion.
I have no comments.
I had one comment that I previously sent to Linda and Beth.
Okay, and it wasn't substantive enough for us to have to discuss it now?
Absolutely not.
Okay, but thank you very much for doing that. Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve all three sets of minutes in one motion. I don't know if that's legal, but I'm going to do it anyway, procedurally.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, wait a minute, who was the, who made the motion?
I, I guess I did.
Leah did, and it's second by Rick. Okay, I'm calling the roll for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Can I say yes and abstain for 5:24 and yes for 6:00 and 6:16?
Yes, okay, so you're abstaining, that'll be noted in the minutes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I think I may need to abstain on one of those, but I don't remember what date.
Likewise, likewise.
Would you, all right, so Linda, please check to see who has to abstain from which one and, and record accordingly.
Yes, I could do that.
Okay. And Bonnie, yes. All right, so the other item I had was what I alluded to earlier, looks like we're going to. Do I have agreement that we're going to can eight four? We're not going to be, right? Okay, so the other question is, we're coming back on the 20, the 21st of this month. And we're going to be remote. Then it's going to be a month until the second meeting in August. How do you guys feel about going back to face to face? City council is set up for hybrid if we need it. And I think it's still required for the members of the public, even if all of us want to show up. But it does give you the option to participate remotely. But the first question is, how do you feel about seeing each other?
I want to be in person and with that I am going to say, good night. I have to leave.
All right, good night.
Good night, sorry, thank you, everybody.
All right.
Bonnie, for me, I think what you're saying is we, we have the optionality, correct? We, we can pick one or the other, correct? And I guess your question, I guess your question is if everyone's going to do remote, which my sense is that's not the case, but. Or are you asking? What are you asking?
I'm asking if you would like to go back to meeting in person, starting the second meeting in August.
So may I ask you, so if I tell you, I would like to have the optionality to do either attend or, or participate by Zoom? Is that answering your question?
That call, that's called a hybrid model, yes, yes. But you can't have hybrid unless people are willing to meet face to face. Otherwise, you end up with just a remote meeting. So that's why I started with the face to face. The second option is hybrid and of course, the third is just to continue like we have been. So you're good with.
Face to face.
Good.
I'd be comfortable, I think, face to face, but I like the hybrid option, just in case something changes.
Yeah.
And that's the same for me as well. I'm comfortable meeting face to face, but it's good to have the hybrid option.
Okay, so we will.
It'd be great for all to actually meet us all in person.
Yeah, that'd be great. And guess what? Our other candidate, Bob Cowp, is going to be interviewed on tomorrow night. And I think he's going to be submitted for approval unless something really goes wrong tomorrow night on Monday. So we will have a new member by then. We'll may have a new member by the 21st, actually. He may be introduced to everybody remotely and then we'll all meet in person and meet him and Alden for the first time. So very exciting, yeah. All right, so we will, Andy, we will go with a, I guess a hybrid model, but most of us, if not all of us, will plan on being there face to face. On August, I keep forgetting that date.
Eighteenth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I could, if I could just suggest that that come with a, two caveats. One, one, I think we should continue for, just as a transitional period at least. Continue the usual process we've been doing since the pandemic started, which is when we do notices to people or we post things. We let people know that the location will be remote and or, you know, at city hall or, you know, in a public meeting. But that folks should check the city calendar to be sure. That's because we weren't sure if there's any transition or any problems that might arise, we, we've covered ourselves illegally. That's more of a footnote for you because we're just doing that as a matter of, you know, administrative notice for folks. But the, the one piece I did want to point out was that I don't think it'll be an issue here because the council obviously was expecting. You know, as much transparency as possible, if you will, for playing with ZBA, obviously going back a year or two to, to some discussion on that. But I just want to make sure that we always have the room we need because that room, there's two rooms right now, I guess, that, that have that capacity right now. Senior Center and the Council Chambers, I just want to make sure that we don't run into any snags, technical issues. In either case, obviously the remote Zoom capacity or the hybrid piece like Bonnie said will be there. I just want to make sure that we don't run into issues in the room. So as Bonnie mentioned, they have worked out most of the kinks, I think, in the Capitol Chambers for that. And they've tried at the Senior Center and I think had some reasonable success. There's been a few glitches here and there, but seems to be working. We will have the same sort of Zoom setup, I think, for the foreseeable future, either way.
Okay, so that'll be good. Are there any other updates you want to give us?
Not at this hour, Chair, thank you.
I just want to thank everybody, well, I'll say it again when we get in person, but you know, this has been a, a long, whatever number of months I've given up counting on Zoom. And I think we've done pretty well. I really appreciate everybody staying on the screen as much as you could. To simulate seeing each other, but it will sure be a lovely change to be face to face. So, and again, for tonight, I'm flabbergasted that we got through that whole list and I'm going to thank Heather tomorrow. It was, I think it was worth it. So thank you again for everything tonight as well, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Don.
I'll second.
Thank you, Alden. All right, roll call, Alden.
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Andy, and good night.
Night.
Night.